All right. Good evening, everyone. We're gonna go ahead and get the meeting started. Sorry, I hear a bunch of echoing. Yeah. Before council, we were in an executive session, so we need to go ahead and close that out. The time is now seven oh three P M. And the executive session has been concluded. Will all participants in the executive session please state their names for the record? I'll start with Councilmember Case.
Kelly Case, Mayor Pro Tim Kelly Case.
Councilmember Frank Connors.
Councilmember Catherine Nakai.
Councilmember Rusty Neil.
Councilmember David Ott.
Councilmember Robert Zulawaga.
City Manager Michael Lawson.
If any person who participated in the executive session believes that any substantial discussion of any matters not included in the motion to go into executive session occurred during the executive session, or that any improper action occurred during the executive session in violation of the open meetings law, I ask that you state your concerns now. Hearing none, the next agenda item is actually going to be, because the executive session is on the agenda and the city manager's evaluation is an annual item that we take a look at. We had a consensus in session for the city manager's contract and council, we can either just have consensus or we can do a motion and a vote for the raise that we as read upon.
I moved that we approved the rates of the negotiations. We had an executive session for the city manager's salary and terms and conditions for this year twenty twenty-two, twenty-three. I'll second that.
Very good. Got it, Suzanne?
Yes.
LeVar?
Yes.
Case?
Yes.
Connors?
Yes.
Nakai?
Yes.
Neil?
Yes.
Ott?
Yes.
Zulawaga?
Yes.
Thank you. Most of your students will sleep. Thanks. Now we'll do the pledge of allegiance.
What's my, I don't know, I don't have.
Well, I've got some of them what's in the park, but is it on just any of them?
All right, done. That item three A review of openings of the various boards and Suzanne is our presenter for that.
Thanks, Mayor. This evening I wanted to talk with council and with the audience and folks at home to let them know that it's the time of year that we're going to start advertising for positions on our various boards and committees. Some of these are at risk of not having enough people on them to where we can't get a quorum. So I wanted to just talk a little bit about it so the audience knows what positions are available. And if you as council have anybody that you want to recruit, you can recruit for those. Starting with the first one that we have is the Board of Adjustment. And for the people in the audience that don't know what the Board of Adjustment is, the B O A conducts public hearings upon submission of a request to vary zoning zoning or of a request to appeal an administrative decision. There are five regular members and two alternate members on this board. The term for a member on this board is three years or filling a term of someone that's vacated. For this this board, the individuals must be a city resident. So anybody that's interested in this in the audience or at home to participate on the B O A, you must be a city resident. This board meets the third Monday of every month at what time Karen? At six thirty P M. So for everyone out there, if that can work with your schedule, we will be posting that call for service and the applications on the website. The next one that we have available is the Board of Review, a little different than the Board of Adjustment. And the Board of Review hears and decides appeals of order, decis- decisions or determinations made by the building official. They grant minor variances. And here's complaints regarding licensed contractors. There are five regular members and two alternate members on this board. This committee, it varies whether they they don't have to all be a city resident. So we can have people that live in the county can apply for this one. And these meet the third Thursday at three P M. If there are cases, so they don't meet every month.
Three thirty.
Three thirty P M. Okay. The next board is keep Woodland Park beautiful and Councilmember Zulawaga is the liaison for that. Grace is our staff person for that. This is a really fun committee, not that the other ones aren't fun, but this is a fun. This is a fun committee. I'm sorry, it's gonna actually put a picture up here of something that the keep Woodland Park Beautiful Committee has just done. A lot of you may have seen this on social media, the sign as when you come into Woodland Park coming from Divide. This is our very old Woodland Park sign and they just they just painted it and revitalized it and made made it look beautiful. So the keep Woodland Park Beautiful Committee protects the community's wildlife, natural beauty by reducing the accumulation of litter while promoting the responsible handling of trash through education enforcement and active community participation. The board must have at least nine members, but can have up to fifteen members. There's no term limits on this board and no requirements that you must live in the city of Woodland Park. This board meets the second Thursday at five thirty P M. This board is in dire need of people. The last several meetings that they've had, they have not had a quorum, so they can't do any business. So if anyone is out there and is compelled to be on this board, we would appreciate applications for this board, and I know Grace would really appreciate that as well. The finally, the final one that I want to talk about tonight is the Planning Commission. And all of you in the audience and at home have heard us talk many, many times about the Planning Commission. And you know the importance of this committee. The Planning Commission is a nine-member advisory board established to assist the city council in providing for orderly development within the city of Woodland Park. The Planning Commission conducts public hearings related to new subdivisions, zoning changes, conditional use permits, flood hazard development permits, and changes to the subdivision or zoning regulations. The terms for these positions are three years. They meet the second and fourth Thursday of the month at seven P M. So they're six thirty. Okay. Sorry about that. They meet the second and fourth Thursday of the month at six thirty P M. So they're opposite of the council meetings. And for this committee, for the planning commission, you must be a resident of the city of Woodland Park. So we are just putting a plea out there for any of the citizens, residents, or anyone that's interested. This is the time now to start thinking about taking on a new committee and applying. So thanks for letting me do that.
Thanks, Suzanne. Those are the B O A, B O R, and the Planning Commission are incredibly educational boards to sit on, especially if you're interested ever potentially in council. It really teaches you a lot of civic responsibility and duty to the community. It shows you how much power the local government actually has in responsibility over your daily lives. So they're fascinating boards. They are a small commitment to time, but also you're appointed to them. And if for whatever reason, the time just doesn't work out for you, you know, you're not committed for life. No one's going to keep you on the board, but you would have the opportunity to really learn a lot and 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 I think they're fascinating and and I really hope that people take the time to apply. So share the information with your neighbors and friends and try to get some people to put some applications in.
Yeah. And if anyone has any questions, I'm on the website, just call me and I can help answer them, direct you to the staff liaisons or come, come to any of the meetings so you can witness and see how they are when they're in action.
Yeah. All right. Thanks a lot. So item eight C is the moratorium extension. And I was thinking it might be wise to move eight C under nine A. Because we may or may not need it. So it'd be silly to vote on it and make it nine B. Yeah. So if you guys are okay with that, do we need a motion for that or consensus is okay?
Yeah, I was actually gonna make the same suggestion, Hillary.
Good. So if everybody do have consensus to just move that after nine A, make it item nine B.
Yes.
Yes. Okay.
Yep.
All right. That's it for that one. And then we have on to five consent calendar. I know I've got some council members that have some questions, so we can't put them all together this evening. So we'll go ahead and start with five A.
Okay, so the first item on the consent calendar is the minutes of the November third twenty twenty-two council meeting. As council will recall and everybody in the audience, this is quite the meeting with the motions, the sub motions and everything. But one council member, Councilmember Zulawaga brought something to my attention that he feels needs to be corrected. And I do need to get a consensus from council before I make the correction. So if council will turn to page ten.
Please give us, give us a little time to do it.
Page ten of the hot packin'.
Correct. Page ten of one hundred and seventy-six. That's how big your, that's how big your packet was this time. And if you go mostly to the bottom where you see the paragraph that starts with at this time, are we all there yet?
Page ten.
So the paragraph that I had recorded, I wrote at this time, Councilmember Zulawaga shared the following amendments he and Councilmember Ott would like to see added to ordinance number fourteen thirty-one. Councilmember Zulawaga has asked me to change that statement to at this time, several council members shared the following amend amendments they would like see added to ordinance number fourteen thirty-one. In my records, I only have had it, I only had it as Councilmember Ott and Councilmember Zulawaga. So I want to see before I change it to several council members. Were there other council members that wanted to see these amendments?
I did not.
Not I.
I didn't.
You did. Okay, then I am going to change that statement from from Councilmember Zulawaga and Councilmember Ott to several council members. I just needed to get your consensus with that. So I would look for a motion to approve the minutes as amended. Thank you.
So can I get a motion, please, council?
I'll move to approve the November third twenty twenty-two regular city counting council meeting minutes as amended.
I'll second. Go ahead.
Who's gonna?
That was a mirror.
I heard Frank.
Okay, council, you can vote. We have the electronic voting set up for you this evening. Thank you, council. Motion has passed unanimously.
Okay, we're gonna move on to item B, which is approval of the September twenty twenty-two statement of expenditures. And we have our finance director, Aaron Vazalotti. Good evening, Aaron.
Good evening. So we have September and October's statement of expenditures.
Oh, yeah, we can do both of those together. Counsel, are you guys okay with that? You can ask Aaron your questions.
Yeah, I just have some questions.
Okay, go, report.
Do you want us to just address all of the items?
If you have answers for them now, like, do you want me to pose them to you or how do you want to?
Is the list, I believe you had.
I need to read them.
Maybe we can go to the pages in the in the agenda.
Can one of you let council and public know what you're doing?
So Aaron, give us a report of the expenditures for each of the previous months and he gives us pages of that. If you've got the packet, you'll see it in it. So the first expenditure I asked him to clarify is on page seventeen in your packet. It's Kiwit Infrastructure. We issued him a check for five hundred and two thousand dollars and six, six, five thousand two, five hundred, two thousand, six hundred, twenty-six dollars. And my question to him, what percentage of the contract of the Baldwin Rampart Range Road does that cover? Are we finished with them or is there more? So just a pretty big check for them.
It is. And there's actually going to be a bigger one coming again at the end of this month. So that was the first pay application for the Kelly's Baldwin project. It represents about a quarter of the project. And then there will be another one for one point five million coming in, but the the total cost of the project was around two point two million dollars.
Is that staggered or is that like a, you're gonna do like three part payments or just one big one?
There's gonna be a total of three payments for that. There's pay up one that was for that roughly five hundred thousand amount. Pay up two and three were combined due to scheduling and then pay up four will be a smaller, close to a hundred thousand dollar check. And then there's also retainage being withheld with each one of those pay applications.
Great. Thank you. The next one is guarantee electric contract repairs to reroute damaged streets.
Yes.
On page, I'm sorry, it's on page eighteen, fourteen thousand and twenty-five.
So this was for the light system downtown. All the streetlights are poured in the sidewalk and there was a conduit and a light that or some electrical work that needed to be reworked. And the big expense in that project was the boring because we didn't want to cut the entire top of the street and tear out a big section of sidewalks. So they ended up boring in the new conduit to replace that to make sure all the lights worked in connectivity.
Okay. Aaron, the next one, I didn't know about confidentiality, so.
We'll give you that one separately.
Okay. Page nineteen, Wilson and Company. We tend to issue a lot of money to Wilson and Company. I I see there's like between these two reports is about three payments. First one's like thirty-two thousand, seven dollars. So just some perspective on that.
Yes, this was for construction management services for those American Rescue Plan funds. These are fully one hundred percent reimbursable through those funds as part of the overall project cost.
Okay.
And so this was just observation during the time to help work through the contract and all the quantities and make sure it was built and installed correctly.
And it looks like we'll be dealing with them quite a bit. Page twenty-two. A one chip seal, hundred and sixty-one thousand and fourteen dollars. I noticed in some of the smaller streets, I haven't seen a lot of chip seal done. So the big project Kelly and Baldwin, but just wonder where where did all that happen?
Yeah. So that was part of the contract that was approved to bring to do all the chip seal work that was not performed during the pandemic years to bring it up to the where we are at for twenty twenty-two for the pavement management plan recommendations. So while there weren't full large streets that were being done at the same time, each segment was being done exactly as the pavement management plan recommended. So it will look like there's sections of blocks that were chip sealed. But that was just done specifically adhering to the science, the recommendations for pavement management plan.
Thank you. I think that's my last one. Thank you. So unless anyone else has questions on.
Counsel, anything further?
I move to approve the two expenditures for the months of, all right. October and September and October.
I'll second.
Hey, counsel, you may vote. Thank you, council. Motion is passed unanimously.
And in council, if I might, I've had a request from a council member to have an update on revenues here to date, which is something that we should be doing on a regular basis and we'll try and get back into that habit. I don't know if you wanted to have that as part of the statement of expenditure conversation, or we can bring that back later during reports. And Aaron is prepared to just a few slides. I don't know if it makes a difference to you. Well, we usually do it during reports.
I was suggesting to do it right before we present the budget. Sounds okay?
Oh. That's right. Is that okay?
Perfect. Okay, so we'll move on to items. Let's see, D, E, and F, but we'll start with D for approval of twenty twenty-three roadway infrastructure and our city engineer benchment.
It's really, he doesn't, it's just if the if council has questions, it's not really a presentation. It's.
Counsel, as are there any questions or comments for it?
I can give a, sorry, I can give a quick.
Yeah, please.
Synopsis.
Please, yeah.
Yeah, so for the roadway infrastructure projects, this is for the engineering and design for projects that were met the criteria of needing to be done for the pavement management plan had drainage issues and then galvanized waterline replacements in them. And so there was an opportunity to complete the entire street at one time. And so the goal was to get all the engineering started as early as possible so that we can be complete early on in twenty twenty-three and be ready to go out to advertise to be competitive. So this is just for the engineering services for those projects.
So were there any questions from council about that one? Seeing none. Suzanne, do you want us to put those, all three of them into a motion or do you want to assume individually?
Up to you, man.
If either you comment on them all or I want him to comment on on a couple of other ones as well. So
Yeah.
You want to do one at a time, then we just.
Yeah, okay.
We can do one at a time.
I'll make a motion to approve the twenty twenty-three roadway infrastructure projects, design and engineering contract between Wilson and Company and the city of Woodland Park for five hundred and seventeen thousand, eight hundred and fifty-nine dollars.
I'll second.
Counsel, you may vote. Thank you, council. Motion has passed unanimously.
Okay, we'll move on to E. Approval of the cemetery expansion design. Does anyone have questions for Ben on that?
I asked Ben to to give us an idea of why that there was such so much larger than what it initially was, which I thought it was about forty thousand. Now it's a hundred and ten. So he has, he has just a great understanding or in a couple of minutes is very good. So I don't know if you can bring your, are you bringing your drawing?
Thank you. I did not, I did not bring my drawing, but I can explain what's going on with the cemetery expansion. So basically, the first half of the cemetery is currently built out with roadway access to all the plots that are existing right now. And this design would be to extend the roadway throughout the rest of the cemetery, adding additional plots. But the reason that this is a little more expensive than a typical roadway design project is there is a large hillside on the southeast corner of the property. And this hillside needs a retaining wall to be able to allow the roadway expansion to go in. This was also the identified location in the plan for a column barium. And so there is a unique opportunity to build a retaining wall to hold the hillside back, but also integrate a really pretty design for a column barium into that hillside and allow parking there. So it's really kind of the best use of the site, but the design of the retaining wall and the column barium is really where that extra expense comes in for the engineering design.
Any further questions? Okay, you want to make a motion on E?
I'll make a motion to approve the cemetery expansion design between Wilson and Company and the city of Woodland Park for a hundred and ten thousand.
I'll second.
Thank you, council. You may vote. Thank you, council. Motion has passed unanimously.
All right, we'll move on to item F. That's the approval of M M O F trail and sidewalk design. There are questions about that from council.
Ben, the only thing is just where the funds are coming from, from that.
Yes, so this was a, it's a multimodal operation fund is the the name of the grant that the planning department had acquired before I started work here in February. And so this was to look at all the ADA ramps in the city and improve those, bring those to spec as well as improve the trail system on the north end of town along sixty-seven. We got some money from the county as part of this project, but the big portion of this is there's a fifty fifty split for this entire project designed at around one point one million. There's a fifty fifty split between the M M O F funds, which are federal funds and our funds. So we're really contributing around five hundred thousand to this project. And this engineering design all counts towards that one point one million. So that this will be split as part of the the project there.
So I'd just like to share, and I mentioned this to you at the P P A C G board meeting last week. The city of Colorado Springs did an amendment to the tip and the transportation improvement project list. There's a million acronyms with those folks anyway. And they're using different funding. And so those, those that fifty percent goes back on this project. It's about five hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars. I think you received notice, but those are available for application right now. If there's more that we would like to do, just FYI.
Yeah, thank you, Kelly, for bringing that up because that's an excellent point because the the sidewalk portion of these roadway projects is actually eligible. I spoke during the TAC meeting today, so we'll be applying for the sidewalk portion of that. Hopefully we we can get it, but we're also eligible to have two M M O F projects running at the same time, which is a really good thing. So.
Awesome. Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Appreciate.
Any further questions?
I'll make a motion to approve the M M O F trail and sidewalk design between Basis Partners and the city of Woodland Park for a hundred and sixty-four thousand, four hundred and forty-five.
I'll second.
We vote, council? Thank you, council. Motion is passed unanimously.
All right, moving on to item G, and that's approval of a contract for the visual improvements to the past cultural center and our Parks and Rec Director, Simi Keating, is up. Counsel, do you have any questions for?
Just a quick summary. Yeah, because it will just the fact that it's the highest bid on it and why and benefits, et cetera.
Sure. So as many of you may or may not know, the equipment of the aquatic center is fairly old. So our visual system is about ten years old, while our audio and lighting systems are twenty plus years old. So it's time to look at replacing those and meeting the needs of our community with the improvements that we're suggesting tonight, the cultural center will be able to actually generate additional revenues with this. So we did receive three bids for this project. Our low bid was for a hundred and two thousand, eight hundred dollars, which did not provide an electrical work or they would not do any work on the current house lights. The middle bid that we received was a hundred and three thousand, six hundred and sixty-three dollars. This did not offer an inclusive lighting option, and it noted that electrical work would need to be hired additionally. So the third bid, which is the most complete bid for a hundred and thirty-eight thousand, five hundred and seventeen dollars is the most complete upgrade and will incorporate the current house lights that we have right now. And they'll be user friendly and we'll be upgrading the light system as well. So it was the overall completest, the most complete project. Although it was the highest bid. This project is funded through American Rescue Funds, American Rescue Plan Funds. And per the city procurement, we feel that it would be in the best interest of the public if we were to accept the most complete bid from Global Technology Group.
Thank you. One question is great.
Thank you.
Counsel? That's been in the works for some time now too, hasn't it?
It has. The bids we've had since August, but we've been just kind of looking at them and waiting to see to make sure that the funds would be available in the American Rescue.
Yeah.
So.
Okay. Great.
But the project is projected to be started in eighty percent completed this year and twenty percent completed next year.
Nice. All right, can I get a motion on G?
Yeah, I'll make a motion for the approval of contract for audio visual improvements to the past cultural center. to the U-Pass Cultural Center from Global Technology Group in the amount of one hundred thirty-eight thousand dollars, five hundred seventeen and thirty-two cents.
I'll second it.
Thank you, council. You may vote.
Suzanne, I had to restart my computer, so verbal yes.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, council. Motion has passed unanimously.
Thank you very much. Great, thank you. All right, we are off to item number six, a public comment on items not on the agenda.
I have it right here, ma'am.
Okay. We just need one second to get the list.
Um, I I have Diane Betterman signed up to speak.
Okay.
I'm Diane Betterman. I live in Stone Ridge Drive, and I thank you, council members, for the hard work that you do. I have looked up some numbers. I've done a little research under Archives Center, Woodland Park, Colorado Civic Engagement. I just want to bring them up to you. In two thousand fourteen, the city's total net position increased by one million five hundred fourteen dollars and five, one million five hundred thousand fourteen and five hundred and ten in two thousand fifteen. The total debt increased in two thousand sixteen from five million to twenty-two million. I won't read all of the numbers. What I'm trying to impress on you is that the income is really good here at the city. And in two thousand twenty, the the sentence was written in in the archive. Sales and use tax increased over nine hundred and eighty thousand dollars, and that's close to a million. And that's due to an increase in sales due to population growth and various consumer purchasing practices during the pandemic. Next year, my property could be taxed forty percent more than two years ago. And I did not get a forty percent raise in my paycheck, and maybe lots of us in in Woodland Park have not. When I bought my house, it was five twenty-five, and it's now at seven sixty. I've heard from council people that you're a little nervous about the recession. If you have forty percent more dollars from all the rest of us, you're going to have a windfall besides the regular taxes, retail taxes. You would have a reserve that would be big enough that we would have no debt. You would never have to raise taxes again. Our county has zero debt, and I would like us to have zero debt. I may be paying a thousand dollars more a year for for taxes. And what does a grandmother do? Does she cancel Christmas for the grandchildren? You need to substantially lower the mill rate now. Thank you for listening to me.
Thank you.
Next up, we have Ken Hartsfield.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, staff. Ken Hartsfield, eleven fifty-one, Sunday Circle. I guess I should apologize. Suzanne covered a lot of my emphasis for being here tonight.
Oh, we should have coordinated.
We should have. But I do would like to encourage the public to come forward and volunteer to join the committees, in particular the Planning Commission. We have three vacant seats on the Planning Commission currently. Two of our commissioners' terms are up for either renewal or expiration. So if we don't get those two seats renewed or filled, we will not have a quorum. And we will not be able to move forward with a number of issues that come in front of us. And so we've been going through the short-term rental regulations, a lot of discussion in town, a lot of people concerned and involved with that. Being on the planning commission, we give you the opportunity to give your input into those issues upfront. And so we can take all those concerns, incorporate them into our proposals to take them to council. So again, thank you for the opportunity, but I encourage anyone to apply for those open positions. Thank you.
Thank you.
And then we have Matt McCracken is our last. Okay, is it, is it nine A? Okay, I'll put you down for that. You're welcome. So we are done with public comment, not on the agenda.
Okay, anybody on Zoom? No. All right.
Thank you.
Off to seven unfinished business. None. We have eight ordinances on initial postings. And we've got, we'll start with eight A, which is approval of ordinance fourteen thirty-three. And again, we've got Aaron presenting for that. And this is the general fund.
Mayor, well, Aaron's walking to the podium. I just noticed that we have moved an initial posting ordinance eight C into public hearings on the agenda.
That is true.
But we could do it as initial posting though.
Yeah, not a big deal.
Okay, no, I just noticed it.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Sorry.
All right. So tonight I have the two budget ordinances, but before that, we've been requested to do a sales tax update. So I have the sales tax update for September revenues received in October. Year to date, we've received six million one hundred and nineteen thousand dollars through September. That's a five hundred and forty-three thousand dollar increase over last year. We're up nine point eight percent year to date, year over year. For lodging tax, we've received three hundred and fifty thousand year to date, which is up forty percent over last year, which is a hundred and seventeen thousand dollars more. Sorry, I usually make this a PowerPoint and I forgot why. Okay, here we go. This is the three-year chart for sales tax. You can see the top purple line is two thousand twenty-two. And for most of the year, it's been just trending a little bit over two thousand twenty-one. But the last two months, we've seen a pretty large increase. In two thousand twenty one, we had, September was a little bit off because we had a large refund to Walmart and some other adjustments. But if we look at two thousand twenty versus two thousand twenty-two, you can see that we were still up pretty significantly in August and then also in September. And then the three-year chart for lodging revenue. The dark green line is the two thousand twenty-two numbers, and you can see that we've been substantially over two thousand twenty and two thousand twenty-one all year. And then this is just the chart with the monthly figures. Are there any questions on this?
Yeah, can anyone actually see those numbers from here?
Yeah. This one is more for the packet than for than for percent.
No, it's fine.
It looks big.
Does this one look good, though?
Yes, yeah.
All right.
So council, any questions or comments?
Yeah, so we are looking pretty good this year. After being pretty stagnant most of the year at the three percent, we finally kind of broken through, which is good. Hopefully that will continue. Okay, so we have ordinance fourteen thirty-three and fourteen thirty-four tonight for you on initial posting series two thousand twenty-two. This is considered an initial posting and set the public hearing for December first, two thousand twenty-two. For ordinance number fourteen thirty-three, series two thousand twenty-two, and ordinance appropriating sums of money to the various funds in amounts and for the purposes as set forth below for the City of Woodland Park, Colorado, for the two thousand twenty-three budget year for general funds. And ordinance number fourteen thirty-four, series two thousand twenty-two, and ordinance appropriating sums of money to the various funds and the amounts and for the purposes set forth below for the City of Woodland Park, Colorado, for the two thousand twenty-three budget year for all funds except the general fund. In accordance with the city charter, the city manager prepared and submitted a budget to the city council by October fifteenth. And over the course of several council meetings and work sessions, staff and council reviewed and discussed the proposed draft of the recommended two thousand twenty-three budget. Tonight is the initial posting and setting of the public hearing for the two thousand twenty-three budget appropriation ordinances, adopting the two ordinances following a public hearing on December first, two thousand twenty-two, which will appropriate sums of money that will allow for the expenditure of revenues in each fund in the amount for the purposes set forth in the ordinance. And then I'll go through what is in each one, so. Before I do that, I would like to share. We did have just two changes to the budget from the original proposed. We had changing the name in the council adjustments from Special Events Revolving Fund to Economic Development. And then in the Street Capital Improvement, on page ninety-nine, we had a request to increase the street paving improvements due to the design bid increases, which is a total of a hundred and thirty-eight thousand two hundred and eighty-two dollars in the four-ten fund. Okay. Sorry, we're having some issues sharing the rate screen here. Okay, so in the general funds, we have total budgeted revenues of fourteen million three hundred and sixty-eight thousand two hundred and eighty-two dollars. For the operating expenditures in the budget for general fund, we have elected officials at forty-six thousand six hundred. And we have city managers, six hundred and forty-two thousand zero nine three. For city clerk, we have three hundred and sixty-eight thousand six hundred and fifty-seven dollars. For municipal court, we have a hundred and twenty-four thousand six oh four. For planning and building, we have five hundred and three thousand six hundred and ninety dollars. For interdepartmental, we have nine hundred and thirty-one thousand five hundred and seven dollars. For education support, we have three million sixty-eight thousand five sixteen. For finance, we have six hundred and seven thousand six ninety.
I mean, I would like to say that that the elected officials, the forty-six thousand dollars, I haven't seen any of that. Is this not volunteer?
For parks, building and grounds, we have nine hundred and nine thousand nine oh three. Information technology, we have four hundred and twenty-five thousand six seven sixty-two. For police, we have three million two hundred thousand one thirty-five. For public works administration, we have four hundred and twenty-six thousand four eighty-seven. For fleet maintenance, we have five hundred and eight thousand two hundred and forty-three. And for street operation, we have six hundred and thirty-two thousand and eighteen, which brings us a total operating expenditures for twelve thousand twelve million three hundred and ninety-six thousand eight hundred and fifteen. We have debt service expenditures of seven hundred and five thousand zero eighty-eight. And this is assuming that the Memorial Park is paid off in two thousand twenty-two. We have capital outlay expenditures of six hundred and forty-seven thousand, and we have transfers out of six hundred and eight thousand six seventy-eight, which is a total fund expenditure and transfers out of fourteen million three hundred and fifty-seven five hundred and eighty dollars. All right. Next, we have all of our other funds. For grants, we have bail grant budget at seventy-five thousand three sixty-three. We have Boca Grant budget of fifty-seven thousand one fifty-three, and we have American Rescue Plan dollar three hundred and forty-nine thousand seven hundred and three dollars for a total of one million four hundred and eighty-two thousand two hundred and nineteen dollars. Then we have the bail expenditures. We have seventy-one thousand one twenty-eight. We have Boca at fifty-seven thousand zero sixty-seven, and the American Rescue Plan at one million three hundred and forty-nine thousand seven hundred and three, which is total expenditures of one million four hundred and seventy-seven thousand eight ninety-eight. For downtown development authority, we have budgeted revenues of seven hundred and sixty-eight thousand three fifty-one, which is the same as the total sources. We have current operating expenditures of a hundred and eighty-seven thousand seven hundred dollars and debt service expenditures of four hundred and seventy-eight thousand seven ninety-eight for total funding expenditures of six hundred and sixty-six thousand four hundred and ninety-eight dollars. Culture and Rec Funds, we have budgeted revenues of one million three hundred and forty-five thousand three twenty-eight. We have current operating expenditures for park and recreation at three hundred and fifty-nine thousand eight hundred and fifty-three dollars. Culture Cultural Center, we have a hundred and eight thousand seven sixty-three, and Aquatic Center at eight hundred and one thousand seven twelve. For total Culture and Rec Fund expenditures at one million three hundred and forty-five thousand three hundred and twenty-eight dollars. For lodging tax fund, we have budgeted revenues of four hundred and eighty-four thousand two sixty-four. Zero use of fund balance and total sources is the same. We have transferred a general fund of four hundred and eighty-four thousand two thirty-five, which is the total transfer. Conservancy and Trust Fund, we have budgeted revenues of seventy-five thousand three hundred dollars, which is the total source of funds. And we have transferred to Culture and Recreation Fund of seventy-five thousand, which is the total transfer hour. Street Capital Improvement Plan, we have budgeted revenues of two million eight hundred and thirty thousand eight hundred. We have a use of fund balance of three million three hundred and sixty-five thousand four hundred and sixty dollars, which is a total fund source of six million one hundred and ninety-six thousand two sixty. For expenditures, we have capital outlay expenditures of six million thirty-four thousand five hundred and eighty-five and transferred out of one hundred and sixty-one thousand six seventy-five for a total streets, capital improvement, funding expenditures and transfer out of six million one hundred and ninety-six thousand two hundred and sixty dollars. Okay, next we have the Stormwater Management Fund. We have budgeted revenues of a hundred and fifty-seven thousand nine hundred and forty dollars. Use of fund balance of six thousand one hundred and thirty-five dollars for a total source of one hundred and sixty-one thousand six seventy-five. We have capital outlay expenditures in there, twenty-four hundred dollars, and a transfer out of a hundred and sixty-one six seventy-five for a total Stormwater Management Fund expenditures of a hundred and sixty-four thousand seventy-five dollars. Water Utility Enterprise Fund, we have budgeted revenues of two million six hundred and sixty-two thousand eighty-five dollars. Use of fund balance of two million one hundred and ninety-four thousand six hundred and sixty-three dollars for a total sources of four million eight hundred and fifty-six thousand seven hundred and forty-eight dollars. We have current operating expenditures of one million nine hundred and eighteen thousand seven hundred and forty-eight dollars and capital outlay expenditures of two million nine hundred and thirty-eight thousand for a total Water Utility Enterprise Fund expenditure of four million eight hundred and fifty-six thousand seven hundred and forty-eight dollars. And we have wastewater utility enterprise budgeted revenues of two million two hundred and forty-nine thousand four hundred and fifty dollars. Use of funds available, two hundred and eighty thousand six seventy-five for total source of funds, two million five hundred and thirty thousand one hundred and twenty-five dollars. We have current operating expenditures of one million four hundred and forty-six thousand eight hundred and ninety-nine dollars. Capital outlay expenditures of six hundred and thirty-three thousand. Debt service expenditures of four hundred and fifty thousand two hundred and twenty-six dollars for a total wastewater utility enterprise fund expenditure of two million five hundred and thirty thousand one hundred and twenty-five dollars. Okay, so we ask for you can consider ordinance number fourteen thirty-three and ordinance number fourteen thirty-four, series two thousand twenty-two, and to set the public hearing for December first, two thousand and twenty-two.
Counsel, any questions or comments?
Separate questions.
We wondered about fourteen thirty-five.
About fourteen thirty-five.
We're not there yet.
These two are together?
Well, separate.
Well, we can, we'll vote on those separately. Separately, yeah, but if you have questions about either.
I will move to approve ordinance fourteen thirty-three, series two thousand twenty-two on initial posting as presented.
I'll second.
And set the public hearing for December first, two thousand twenty-two. Go, Frank.
I'll second.
Thank you, council. You may vote.
It's okay. It's not bad, thanks. Working on it.
Thank you, council. Motion is passed unanimously.
Thank you, counsel. Motion is passed unanimously. Sorry, you need to put them.
Thank you.
Mayor, I will move to approve ordinance fourteen thirty-four, series twenty-two-two. On initial posting and set the public as presented and set the public hearing for December first, twenty-two-two.
I'll second it.
Counsel, you need votes. Thank you, counsel. Motion has passed unanimously.
All right. So we'll move on to item D since we moved C. And that is for fourteen thirty-five. Aaron, when you're ready.
I apologize, one second.
Okay.
Okay, here we go. Okay, tonight I have on initial posting ordinance number fourteen thirty-five, series two thousand twenty-two, to amend the two thousand twenty-two. Budget expenditure appropriations, which is a budget supplemental ordinance. Uh, we have ordinance and ordinance adjusting expenditure appropriations to the various funds and the amounts and for the purposes set forth below for the city of Woodland Park, Colorado. For two thousand twenty-two budget year and amending ordinance number fourteen oh-seven, two thousand twenty-one. This is for the Memorial Park Certificate of Participation Series two thousand fifteen. As of December first, two thousand and twenty-two, there are made in principle on the COP is two million, four hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars, and the fund balance reserve designated for the capital debt service at this time is one million, nine hundred and fifty thousand. The original call date on the COP uh is December first, two thousand twenty-five. However, the COP can be paid off in full without penalty prior to the date, as long as the funds do not come for refinancing or new debt issuance. The city will use the capital debt reserve of one million, nine hundred and fifty thousand and fund balance of four hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars to pay off the COP. The city intends to make this payment on December twenty-seventh, two thousand and twenty-two, and that is because we have to give thirty-five days notice to the trustee, which we have been working with. Um, our recommendation, sorry, is to approve ordinance number fourteen thirty-five, series two thousand twenty-two, to amend the two thousand twenty-two budget. And we asked to move this to. Public hearing on December first, two thousand and twenty-two.
Counsel, questions or comments?
Yeah, Darren, um. By paying this off early, how many years early are we paying this off? And then the second, the follow-up question is. How how much uh interest are we saving by paying this off early?
Absolutely, let me pull that up.
Aaron, I have that information handy. Yeah, so we will be paying this debt off twelve years early, and the result is uh avoiding about seven hundred and ninety-five thousand dollars in interest payments over those twelve years.
What was the?
Got again. Seven hundred and ninety-five thousand dollars.
Thank you.
Interest saving.
And so to clarify why it says the call date was December twenty-five, that's the date that we could refinance the debt or purchase, you know, to get a news that it goes a lower interest rate, but. If we were going to pay it in cash out of fund balance, it doesn't make a difference.
Anything further, counsel?
I make a motion to approve. Ordinance fourteen thirty-five, series twenty-two-two on initial posting to amend the twenty-two budget expenditure appropriations, budget supplemental ordinance, and set the public hearing for December first, twenty-two-two. I'll second the motion.
Thank you, counsel. It's ready for you to vote. Thank you, counsel. Motion is passed unanimously.
Thank you.
Very good. Yeah, we're gonna move on to item nine A, and um that's ordinance fourteen thirty-one, series twenty-two-two, and we have. Karen, there she is.
Erin took my spot. Erin. Um, good evening, everyone, um.
You're on.
Because I'm used to my voice moving, so it's disconcerting that it wasn't there. Um, you have in front of you this evening, um, ordinance fourteen thirty-one, series twenty-two-two. Um, this has been in front of you uh for a couple of different reasons on um. Uh, several several meetings now, in in your package uh for the past several meetings. Uh, tried to include uh a fairly detailed staff report uh and kept it up to date with regard to history and changes. As this topic has evolved and moved forward. Uh, so in this particular package, um, there is uh the actually at your last meeting. Um, on initial posting, first reading of the ordinance, uh, the. City Council made a series of amendments to said ordinance. So in your packet this evening, it includes um the entire history of pretty much about a year now in terms of how this had come to be. As well as uh the changes that were requested at that last hearing. Uh, and then there was also a redlined copy of the ordinance. And then a clean version of that ordinance that incorporated all of those amendments and requests. Uh, this is a legislative item, so I know uh people have had a variety of conversations. Um, about what to do about this. Uh, the public has been very involved throughout uh this past year through a variety of civic engagement opportunities. And uh within the ordinance that was in your packet, there are some conflicting language provisions that do need to be corrected and dealt with. Uh, with whatever version is finally potentially adopted. So um with that, I was going to turn it over uh to the city attorney, uh if you guys need any more detailed description about any of those amendments.
Thank you.
Yes, um, mayor and council, I just uh stand ready if you want me to explain any of these amendments, and then as we go on, any questions that you may have.
Okay, very good. And uh Suzanne, how many uh people do we have signed up?
I was just putting them into the computer. We have a total of nine.
Okay, and what about online?
That's um, that's total.
Total, okay.
I have no one online.
All right, so let's go ahead and do um. Public comment first, and then we'll get to our discussion this time.
I would I would like actually uh mayor to uh make a motion to uh to set the tone so that they have something to speak into. So I I would like if 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 it's okay, because otherwise, we are left, the public is left with what we discussed. Two weeks ago, right? And it was a contrary, it was just contrary, so to me, I want to uh present a motion. That gives us, it lays the table to let the the uh community rec- recognize that we've actually figured this out, worked through it. And then when they speak into it, it will be appropriate, otherwise they'll be speaking into something we haven't made as a motion.
Okay, sure.
Okay, and Sarah, if I if I can, I've put it on a, it was very hard to hear Rusty last time. Talk it out, so you'd hear it, so I wanted to put it up on the screen so that people can see actually. And understand what the different colors are and how it ties in uh by way of explanation while she's doing this. Uh, the attorney sent each all of us a proposed. Um, so first, the city attorneys made a modified uh draft. Of what we talked about. Two weeks ago, and the recommendations council made, they were conflicting. So then um four council members put together proposed changes to that. And yesterday, we received green-lined um changes, suggested changes of how it could work. And um I have approached members in the community to go, we are so. Emotionally, not only uh bombarded by this issue and the and the uh different emotional perspectives. So I reached out to the community and said, can you take what you heard? In council, and can you synthesize that into a uh of reasonable? Um, amendment. So that was done late last night. And the this the the synthesis of what the attorney has prepared with the green lines and what the community has heard. Are put together, so you will see that in this proposed document, which is. As it's coming now, so.
Robert or Councilmember Zuluwaga have a question.
Sure.
You said that we got a new green lined yesterday.
Correct.
It was this morning, correct? Did it? Well, I guess it went out very, very late last.
I got it last night.
I I yeah, I sent it a few hours after a phone call, so.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, so so that's going to be presented, the public's going to see that in the lines as we go through this. So you're going to see where the contraries are and what the suggested edits are, so I make a motion to uh present the amended. City ordinance for uh Woodland Park, Colorado ordinance fourteen thirty-one, series twenty-two-two. Uh, which is, as it details here, an ordinance to the city council for the city of Woodland Park, Colorado, amending titles. Five and eighteen of the Woodland Park Municipal Code concerning Business Regulation of Zoning and License to Regulate Short-Term Rentals. So the first part, there's no contention, there's no snow issues. The first one comes up here is under five point two-two oh, one oh. The attorney's green uh uh green line that came to us last night. Has primary residence means a residence, which is the usual place of return for housing and where a person lives. And spends the majority of the time during the year as established by two or more of the following uh current invalid documents. One, a driver's license of Colorado State Identification Card. Two, voter registration. Three, motor vehicle registration. Four, documents designated a primary resident for income tax purposes. A person may have only one primary residence for purposes in this chapter. The green edits were suggested to remove that. Um, I am making this motion that that is uh to stay.
Let let me just clarify real quick, the green edits were not made by the attorney on their sole um. Choice, the green edits were made by the attorney at the direction of consensus of council.
That's absolutely correct, and and actually to uh articulate that, I uh emailed the attorney last night, and I said, so what is the consensus? Please give me their names. So the consensus of the green lines are uh council member Otte, council member Neil, uh council member. Um, Nikai, no, I'm sorry, not Nikai, I apologize now, uh Kelly Case and Mayor Labar.
I'm gonna have to say that I I did not give consensus on that, so you said me, I didn't say anything about it.
And there is actually.
I've been working on it the last couple of days, I've done anything.
Before this this screen, what you haven't read is what she sent last night, which is what you and the other three council members. Uh, wanted her to prepare on top of what the attorneys had initially prepared in from the from what came out of this meeting. And he didn't even know.
And and let's let's.
Wow.
If I could make a comment. The the document right here.
Yes.
Is my. Understanding of what we had talked about. I have found errors, and I think I told you this morning that there were some errors in it already that I hadn't locate or. Identified, but this was my attempt to give to her what you had passed to me. So if there is some in in correct things in there, it's just communication of the game of. One-to-one, one-to-one, back and forth the game, so. It may not be. What you had intended. We've never had a chance.
Yeah, so be clear about that, because I didn't.
Yeah, and I want to.
If he was curious, so I I was just curious why this was even why it was removed. I didn't know why, when I saw it, and I just saw it today, so.
So I just need to, for the record, council member Otte. Did you give?
No, I did not.
Okay, I just want to clarify that for the record, so thank you.
So that make, so I'm going to read to you the attorney's email cover. From last night. Good evening, mayor and council. This afternoon, I was directed. By a majority of you to draft certain proposed amendments to the short-term rental ordinance. For your convenience, I've attached two documents. The first is redlined with the amendments you already directed on first readings. And then includes additional charges made in green, which show the new and soon to be proposed amendments. The second document, and then it's a clean clean document as well, uh I will see you tomorrow in person. I uh I then. Email back to her and I said. Um. Good evening, Nina, please list the four council members who directed you to make these changes. Thank you. She says certainly Neil Otte Labarre case.
So just quickly, because I was under the understanding then by getting that email that. At least you guys had talked to her. To to do your suggested changes.
No, no, I did not.
Councilmember Neal called me and said that he had the consensus of four people. I don't check when that happens, just to clarify.
Yeah, and I and I want to make sure everybody understood what took place individually. We discussed, I was trying to take down what I thought council member Otte had passed to me. I then called, which I then tried to convey to the mayor, this is what I think. The agreement was, and then on a separate call to council member Case. Mr. Otte had told me he had been in contact with council member Connor, and had been in contact with council member Nakai. I don't think you said you had completed your conversation with council members Zuluwaga at the time, but it appeared that there was. At at least four, possibly six, maybe even seven that would. Go with what council member Otte had put in writing and shared with us. I received the guidance from. Council member Otte to reach out to. The attorney and try to get a document crafted to capture that.
Okay.
I passed what I thought. Had been passed to me, so if there's errors, it's the communication game. I have found errors in what I thought I passed to her, so we just need to go through it and say. Which ones did we really want to stay or not? It was my attempt to pull what you were telling me and what I had gathered. And convey it, but it's the game of post office, so there are inaccuracies in there.
Well, okay.
I would just like to chime in a little bit, and I just want the public to know that. These conversations between one-on-one with us, we've been trying to work through this to try and find a solution.
Compromise.
And a compromise so that we can get something in place and move forward. Because all this is doing is holding up folks one way or another. Whether it depending on what, no matter which side of the equation that you're on. And so as a group individually, one-on-one, we've been visiting, trying to see if we can find a compromise and a way to move forward. Because we won't get it right the first time. We we won't, and so if we don't start somewhere, we're never going to start somewhere. And so that's why we've had these conversations amongst ourselves. One-on-one, we have not violated open meetings laws in any way, shape or form. And um so that's why. What Rusty has described has occurred. In good faith, to try and get somewhere. And so I just want to make a point here. I have not seen this document that is up on the screen. It did not come to me. And the mayor said she did not receive it.
Received it, but I have not had time to look at it. I have not received it.
So the document you have in front of you. Well, that that sets the stage for this. Um. I did not know. That it was you who initiated this, and it was you who authorized us to expend the attorney's time and expense to prepare that that part of the document. When it came to me last night, I was assumed that four of you had signed off on it to say, yes, that's what you want. And with that, I approached a member, just just. I approached a member of the of the city who I trust to have the uh the sensitivity of the issues beyond the confusion. And so I took your document, and I'm going to call it your document, Rusty, that Rusty's documents in the green.
Well, I I'm going to object to that. It is not my document, Robert.
As I present this, we understand, we we heard.
It is not my document.
Yeah.
I have found things that in my telephone. I have found things that in my telephone call to the attorney, she captured incorrectly. And I've already reached out to her. We were going to talk about a couple of things here.
Type about a dear thing, but for the most part, I was directed by you guys. I don't I don't do these things on my own.
Yeah, she didn't do it and I thought there was. We we had a spreadsheet that Mister Ott carefully prepared and it was great. And I'm trying to give you some top.
Now, that I did do.
He did a spreadsheet and it was a great document for us to have conversations around.
Yes.
There were some tweaks that I thought had come out of those conversations. That I was trying to capture. Mister Ott was busy. He had asked me to reach out to the attorney.
Okay.
And we thought there would be four votes. But the document is really not a hundred percent accurate as to what I thought it was going to be either. So I want to give him top cover. But I want to challenge, this is not Rusty Neil's.
No, you did have consensus among four council members with the information that was presented by council member Ott.
That was my understanding. Yes.
So so there was agreement there.
About this. I I don't know about. I don't know why we remove it. I mean, I'd probably like to know, but. There's a reason for it. I don't know.
I did not remove that.
All right. So the document that you have in front of you. Uh all of council has not seen this. This was put together today. And refined today to put a synthesis together with what was the confusing ag- agreement we made two weeks ago. It's taken the consideration here of the consensus of four council members in green. And it's got the expression of the community, some members in the community that picks up the pieces that have not been addressed. In the um the green line items. So you're going to see throughout this green, you're going to see red. Uh you're going to see blue. In fact, would you go to the top of the document again, Sarah, to show people what it what it says?
And just.
To to the top of the document in the color coding. So when they watch it, they can see. As amended on first reading eleven-three is redlined. Everything is redlined. That's from November third. The green indicates proposed eleven seventeen amendments by the mayor and three uh council members.
So.
The yellow.
I'm sorry, go ahead and finish. I didn't need to cut.
The yellow highlights indicate amendments um that I have uh initiated in con- conjunction with others. And the blue highlights indicate um to be removed out of the document that has been synthesized here.
So just briefly.
Yeah.
If there if there is an ordinance that there is a consensus on or not. Instead of blending all of these things together, why aren't we doing if like? If if council member Zuluwaga has an ordinance that you would like to introduce with others. And then say council member Ott and and the rest of us have an ordinance we'd like to introduce. Why don't we just do those? Because it would cut down on time and confusion for everyone.
I don't think it's going to cut down time and confusion. This is a synthesis of the entire community's input. It's hearing all of those inputs. It's putting it into this documentation in what I am making is my motion. Of that, that motion will either uh fly or it won't fly.
Okay.
At that time, then the attorney will let us know what the next step is. But I want this on the table. For us all to see clearly what these issues are past all of the confusion. Let's just get down to what something that's a solution, a viable solution. And that's the motion I'm making before us here. And I'm only going to work through those areas that have been changed. So the 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 text as as you can go ahead.
Well, don't see that because I want to make a comment about the Rusty's document. Read what's in yellow. That is your change. It's so it can't be Rusty's document, Robert.
Your um.
Yeah, this is not one person's document.
This is not one person's document at all. This is a synthesis of. Because when we when this came to us and I asked attorney Jeff Wilson at the last meeting, I said. So you have, we have approved an ordinance which is conflicting.
Right.
He says, yes, that's correct and you have to sort it out. So I have tried here to take that, take the conflicting and to sort it out. In a motion that is a viable solution. And you and so when you go through this uh council member Neil, you're going to see the changes. That's correct. A blue highlight indicates whether it's green or red or whatever. It's recommending that it be removed. So as I make this motion, that part's in there and I'm saying that's not going to be there.
I would also recommend that no sub-motions be made. If you have an ordinance or or something that you would like to introduce. Let's do that separately because the sub-motions are what caused the conflicting ordinance to begin with. So that's just my recommendation.
Well, right now.
Yeah, and no, no, we can't vote on anything until we have public comment also. So.
Well, as I'm in the middle of a motion, that brings up the whole question of whether a motion can be made like it was two weeks ago. Sub-motions made and then the motioner changed his motion to add more to it, which is. Was very problematic in what we've worked through. So.
Mayor, Mayor, I'd like to just call um out some order here. This is a public hearing. And a public hearing is is the the ordinance is introduced. The council has an opportunity to ask questions and talk amongst themselves. Then we open public comment. And we hear from the public. Then we may make a motion. And then we have further discussion and then we vote. We are out of order and not of procedure. So I would ask the mayor to allow us to have public comment and then we can look.
Yeah, I'm I object. I'm in the middle of a motion. I've been given the floor. I'm now setting the table so that everybody understands where we're going. And so now that you all understand what you're going to be seeing. I'd like to proceed with my motion.
I just like it on the record. He's out of order. Well, there's public hearing.
Right. So it's.
Okay, so moving.
Step.
Moving along, if I may, Mayor.
So just just to warn council ahead of time, there cannot be a second and a vote until public comment is heard on this motion.
Okay.
So just letting you know.
Can can I just be clear? What is the motion exactly?
I don't know.
Motion is coming before you here, which is a combination. Of what was the initial ordinance brought to us all two weeks ago. With the changes that were voted on two weeks ago with Rusty's motion, my sub-motions, Rusty's counter motion. And the conflicting ordinance that came before. That's what we have before us today.
So are you making a motion to pass or?
I'm making a motion to amend the first reading, which was that motion. Which includes the the amendments that attorney uh prepared in green. Plus the highlights uh that indicate the amendments that uh I am proposing here in this motion, which includes. Those in in the green and blue indicating that those parts, although they are in in the motion. Are I'm uh I'm striking them in my in my motion.
So for the record, council members.
Yes.
On page two, you're asking to leave that green item in the motion.
Yes, if it's got, if it's got a a yellow highlight over a green. That's saying that I'm saying with a green document we got last night, I'm requesting it stay in.
Okay.
Is that you got it? Okay. So if you want to go back to page two now, Sarah. So I am suggesting that the um the green document was to remove the primary residence. Uh uh explanation. I am proposing that it remain in there. Uh next. Uh city clerk, uh the. The city wants it to be the city and then the city will determine wh- which department is in charge of this. So that's been struck. Again, and see the same thing. We're all in concurrence to delete G and H. The caps, all caps are are being removed in the proposal. From from every everyone on council. Next page. Stop uh the ADUs when uh council member Ott and I presented definitions. We discovered that ADUs are already authorized uh as a lodging. And meet the standards for that. So it is being removed as a restriction. And then the uh consensus at the last council meeting cabins and other structures without installed water power and sewer facilities. We all agree to remove L, no short-term rental unit within the SR zoning distance shall be located within five hundred. Feet so that the distancing has been uh removed. In the a person renting or utilizing only a portion of the dwelling unit. Which is their primary residence as such is defined in section five twenty-two oh one oh. For furnishing lodging accommodations for periods of less than thirty consecutive days and where the person owns and occupies a dwelling unit during the same periods. As such rentals or utilization of the dwelling unit shall not be subject to provisions of this chapter that has been struck. Uh clerk again, up 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 up. Go back just a little. Yeah, sorry. Uh or they're designated. So the way that this these city is handling this is. The designee. So whether that's the finance department or wherever will be determined. Clerk again, clerk again. Okay, four. The idea is that within the last uh the suggested changes was uh tw- uh twenty-four months. Uh there has been no more than uh two violations provisions in this chapter entitled. Um I am um making that change to be twelve months. Or or no more than two.
And Robert, that was the error that I had identified with um Ms. Williams this morning. She had captured the wrong number.
Okay, so then there's really well, there's no, yeah. And then the same in the same in five or something.
Yes, twelve months and then they would lose it for a twenty-four month period is what. We had talked about.
Okay, uh going proceeding. Use table. So the table of uses, um the four is short-term rental units in accordance with chapter five twenty-two and section. Eighteen point seventy-eight oh five oh. This is for non-owner occupied. Um I am uh proposing to strike. The uh PC and or or P in short-term. I mean, in SR and UR zones. And in the PUD. The ass, so they're fine in agricultural, NCCC, SC and CBD. The asterisk is use permitted only in non-residential portions of the PUD. Didn't have the ability on this document to to put another uh table like under four in the table. So five is the same as four, except that it's for. Short-term rental units in accordance with chapter five point two-two and section eighteen seventy-eight oh five oh for the owner occupied. So we're making a distinction in the table between non-owner occupied and owner occupied. And those are. Per uh those are permitted. In SR, UR, MFS, MFU. Uh and PUD uh as a um.
So please.
A.
That's completely different.
A a conditional permit. So if it is. Anyway, so there is a there is a component where they would be permitted in a PUD. Uh subject to the the being owner occupied. Moving on.
Go back, Robert. You had something in yellow.
Yeah.
Right there, five.
Five would be if if the use table was added, if I could have gone into the use table and put a five in, that's where it would sit. You understand what the. That the the editing of the of the box was not possible in in this document. You understand? Okay, good. Eighteen oh uh eighteen seventy-eight oh five oh, short uh short-term rental units. We agreed to strike uh uh the exemption of. Except for exemption set forth in five point two-two oh two oh N. You'll see why when we get to that. And uh two accessory dwelling units. Once again, we've agreed that they're not an issue. Uh has also been struck. Again, addition of cabins and other structures without installed water, power or sewer facilities. Seven is uh struck. The number of short-term rental units shall not exceed the established cap because we move remove the caps. We're removing the language here. Also removing eight, every once agreed that uh. This section is struck and it's no short-term rentals uh within the SR zone shall be located within five hundred feet. Once again, distancing. Section seven. Uh current business licensee operated short-term rental businesses. Current business licenses, licensees operating short-term rental businesses would be considered legacy licenses. And require renewal during the two months after the effective date of this ordinance. Legacy STR license applications will be issued in the form of a non-conforming business license. The license does not run with the property but is issued to the specific owner of the property. The license shall expire upon sale, change of signatory. Or transfer the property or loss of license. The license shall not be transferred or assigned. To another individual person, entity or address, but must maybe managed by a third party on behalf of the owner. The licensee must abide by all the terms of this ordinance. That's an addition into uh this document. Go ahead, Sarah. We agree to strike that for the first two months in the effective data disorderance, if the number of short-term rental license applications are submitted. Once again, it's referring to caps. We all agree to strike the provide the current valid rights and that's already addressed earlier. Uh for different uh application of it. The next part is um. Was suggested in the green document to strike the uh provide a current valid. Business license holder operating a short-term rental business. In MFS, MS, uh MFU zoning districts, I'm suggesting that be struck. Applies to the short-term rental business license application within two months of the effective date of this ordinance. The bro prohibition of the short-term rental business in. The MFS and MFU, I'm suggesting that uh MFS MFU be struck. Certain zoning and districts shall not apply to the new, to such new short-term rental business license applications and subsequent renewals. For the short-term rentals units and by the same license holder, subject to five point. Two-two oh two oh F. I am suggesting what you see there in in is struck in green. Be. Added to the document, be left in the document. Without the provision of, well, this is actually, I say left in the document. The attorney put this in at the recommendation of a consensus of council members. And um well, actually, you'll have to explain that.
With the.
The green, the green uh without the yellow on it, just the green with the line through it.
Oh, um that is changed because if you guys are going, you you guys were removing the cap. And that probably should have been removed in the in the first version, but if you're going to remove the cap. Then that first screen strike through doesn't apply. But then, since you're not allowing them in the MFS and MFU, I was told yesterday that some people wanted it addressed. That the people who currently have those licenses should should keep their short-term rental business licenses.
We'll address that in the next line here. I. Almost. Um so I'm suggesting that this provide a current valid driver's license. Uh operating short-term rentals and MFS and MFU zone district applies to short-term. I'm suggesting these zones are it's not permitted in this zone, so I'm um removing that entire blue block. Fees paid within the last three months. That's been changed to two months from the effective from the uh. The effective until December thirty-first. Actually, that's not going to really work anyway.
I just did that because it's November and not October. There's only one more, two more months and.
Right.
That and that that I wasn't directed to do, but that was a cleanup.
A cleanup, all right. Uh section nine, future SGR review. Um. This is a new section, future review of SGR regulations within twelve to eighteen months from the effective date of this ordinance. The planning commission or city council, I would suggest, shall revisit the city's short-term rental regulations. During that timeframe, the city shall direct. An update to all most recent housing need assessments and shall have a short-term rental economic impact study conducted. Additionally, the city police and code enforcement department shall capture twelve months of data regarding calls for service or complaints of crime. Or nuisance at short-term rental unit properties. Once all data is collected and both studies have been completed. The planning commission will review and analyze. Same to make recommendations for city council regarding whether amendments to the city's short-term rental regulations are required. And there will also be a housing study happen in that same period. So they'll have that data as well. And that is the uh written uh motion. And that is the, uh, written, uh, motion. Do I have a second? Oh, that's right.
Yeah, we need to have public comment.
Oh, okay.
But before we open public comment, I have a feeling there are other council members then who would like to discuss or introduce information as well.
Well, in procedure, right, for the lack of a second, the motion fails. Just so on the record for process. Well, it does in every other ordinance.
I'll second the motion.
Thank you, Frank.
Now I advise not, uh, to vote on it because you want to have public comment first, so behold that in advance.
Right, thank you. Okay, so council, do you want to have further discussion or do you want to have public comment and then have discussion?
Uh, I think it'd probably best to have our discussion, um, but there would be, there would have to be. There would have to be a motion to amend this motion, there would have to be.
Right.
Um, and we would have to vote on those things, but I'd like to think we should probably. Say whatever we need to say about it, so the public knows kind of where we're going, what direction, you know, so I think that makes sense and, um. You know, I don't mind sharing the spreadsheet that I sent to every single member on this council to include city staff. So, and with what I chose and why I did that. So I signed me, I just have to email it probably to Sarah. Cause I don't have a thumb drive.
If Sarah.
Because that's what the document is that we had all our conversations.
It is.
And, and to the, to the citizens, it was a great series of conversations in which there was a lot of give and take. Um, but I would like them to see what you had originally proposed because what Mr. Zuluaga has proposed. Has significant changes.
If I can make a comment while you're pulling that up, David. I just would like to point something out in what was just presented to us. Section nine, future review of STR regulations was something that. That we as a group of four, um, agreed to and thought that it was wise, uh, considering the rest of the ordinance. And that was to have s- some, some work done to gather data. So that we could evaluate the effectiveness of what we're doing and whether or not changes need to be made. What's being presented will cause great harm on folks that have very expensive investments that. Can't go back eighteen months from now and start over. So it, it, it doesn't make sense to me to go so strong to ban. STRs in single-family and PUD zonings. And in eighteen months, I'm sure folks will sit on their real estate, um, with no revenue coming in. And wait for us to do these studies. Um, it just doesn't make common sense to me, and I just want to point that out. Um, the purpose of this being in the ordinance that Rusty David's Hillary and I have discussed. Is to get some, uh, ro- real data with which to make good decisions. And, and having the time to do that, um, at this, where we're at now. So I just wanted to point that out, um, it seems like a waste of time and money if we're going to ban them.
Well, I'd like to clarify, no one is suggesting banning short-term rentals.
I said in S, single picture.
Banning in single SR, single-family residential, urban residential and planned unit development.
They're not, and anyone who has one, anyone who has one continues to operate them. They, that's what the legacy language means. So there's no, there's no banning. There is simply stopping the clock and saying in future, we're redirecting all future STRs to the commercial zone.
It is banning the property, not the people. It is banning the home that sits in the, within that zoning area. That home that sits within that zone. Will change ownership many times, perhaps, maybe never, but if it changes ownership, then the people who. Move into that home in that zone will no longer be allowed to have an STR.
Correct.
Which makes that a ban.
No, it's a ban with, a ban would say, nobody can have an STR in a residential. What we're saying is if you have, to me, it's, it's, it's quite like we have the, um, uh, RV parks. And there was, people were up in arms when we tried to change the, uh, amount of time a, a, a person could stay in an RV park. And it totally upset, in that case, it was three businesses to make the, the ruling that we were recommended. To make from the planning department at that time. And that was just, that was banning, that was saying, that's it. What we're saying here is. If you have invested in a short-term rental in a residential commu- residential zone. Already, and you are one of those who has a license that was put in place before the moratorium. You are free to continue to do that as long as you own that property. However, when that, if you do choose to sell it or you choose to, um, um, if you choose to sell it. You, that property becomes part of this, of the single-family residence pool, which it. It, right now, according to the way our tables go, is the lawful use of that property. This is a, a conditional permit that they have while they own it. There's nothing being banned. There's no one being disadvantaged by this. It's a great compromise for us to ke- to protect. The interest of our residential, uh, community and keep that distinct from our commercial. We need a strong commercial. We absolutely do, and if we direct our, uh, STRs to the commercial, we achieve both.
You know, that's your opinion and I'm not going to play a game of semantics with the definition.
Mr. Zuluaga, it is a clever way of wording your, your desires of putting it strictly in commercial.
That's right.
Zones. It's clever, but the tru- truth is, you're trying to get it only in the commercial areas. You've wanted that all along and you've been fighting with several council members who have been against that.
Well, I represent community members.
It's everyone, every council member is entitled to their opinion up here. That is your opinion. Which you also violated council rules of procedure by putting it in a letter and not stating that it was your opinion. You stated that it was going to be council's decision to make them commercial. And you should have said that it was your opinion, not a ruling by council. So that did violate procedures, by the way. Council member, ah, you were speaking, I'm sorry, I interrupted you.
Yeah, I was just saying, I, I think we get it. Um, I don't think everybody's had to say what they have to say, right, about that? Okay, um, so Sarah, can you throw up that spreadsheet? I don't, it might be really hard for folks to see. So, uh, so I made a spreadsheet here and just kind of, I, it was very emotional for everyone. It's very emotional for both sides out in the audience. And, uh, I listened to what everybody had to say. I read all the emails and, uh, I tried to take, just to apply some common sense. Trying to look at, uh, not over-regulating right off, look at how do we, how do we get the studies? How do we get the information? It's not conjecture, but. Actual information that we can use that are facts. And I had the three things that we had here, which was the legacy license situation. What I call turn the wild west, um, unrestricted in all zones, and then the caps. So, um, just kind of outlined, can you scroll down for me, please? Yeah. Wow. Well, so for the, uh, option criteria, we can go over that here. Um, so this was, this was to let the, uh, current STRs, as we discussed in the last council meeting. To include thirty-one applications to operate, um, and the term perpetuity there, it's not really perpetuity forever. It's if you change ownership, that sort of thing, as we discussed last meeting.
David, that number has changed to fifteen.
No, no, that's, this is the original thirty-one.
Oh, I see.
We had thirty applicants on top of that.
Thank.
Um, but yes, that had dropped down and if we don't have them, didn't have them in the MFU, it could be, be less, but we can talk about that in a little bit. Um. So this was, uh, here until ownership changes, et cetera. We, we discussed all this already. And this was just kind of what that criteria was. The, uh, second option here was unrestricted use for the current and the thirty-one applicants in a future. Uh, applications for requests, non-owner occupied and owner occupied in any zone. And then the caps was the, uh, different percentage of caps in the zones, and no owner occupied or owner occupied allowed. Or non-owner, I'm sorry. And so that was kind of what we were working with. So can you scroll down to the next line there? So he's kind of did some benefits, some disadvantages here, um, looked at, you know, current owners, applicants can continue to operate. Um, for residents, uh, against, you know, non-owner occupied STRs, they won't eventually gone, um. Or, uh, residents against STRs, investors not be able to continue to buy multiple properties in residential areas for housing. Making more houses available for long-term rental or for sale to folks who want to be here as permanent residents until more housing's built. Uh, though not a guarantee, they won't, won't be bought for STR use unless restricted due to PUD or HOA. Property maintenance companies will continue to have opportunities with STR business. The city of Willen Park continues to collect property tax and the owner occupies would have no strict, no restrictions. For the second one there, the second option, it was for both owners and non-owner occupied, no restriction for property, property use. For STR purpose, no current owners or applicants would be financially harmed. Um. That, I think I missed that in the first one as well, that, uh, if they were continued, able to operate. Um, the current ones would not be financially harmed either, just want to make that note. Uh, property maintenance companies will continue to have opportunities with STR business. All applications will be processed and allowed to operate. The city of Willen Park collects more, uh, property tax. And allows folks to earn more income with their property with less restriction on their rights. Non-current, this for the last one for the caps, it was, uh, non-current owners or applicants will be, or sorry, no current owners or applicants will be financially harmed. For those with an, uh, financial invested STRs will be conditionally permitted use. They must have a license to operate for residents. They would be limiting and reducing the overall number. Property maintenance companies will continue to have opportunities with STR business. City of Willen Park again collects taxes. And owner occupied again would have no restrictions under that, uh, original ordinance there. Um, okay, so that was the benefits that we looked at, just kind of without, uh, emotion and just kind of stated some, some things there for people. Um. Go ahead and scroll down to the next one, please. Alright, so, so disadvantage, we looked at that as well, so for the, um. The, uh, uh, legacy licenses, um, and then banning, you know, or whatever term we want to use, uh, not allowing new, uh, non-owner occupies. For the second vacation homeowners, new non-owner occupied, uh, stops folks who live somewhere else from profiting on their vacation home. When they're not using it. So that would be the folks that may stay up here for a month, two months, three months, or just visit their property when they want to. Uh, and their families and still be able to earn some income to pay their taxes, et cetera, whatever it is. Uh, for investors, uh, they will not be able to continue to buy multiple properties in residential areas. For current non-owner occupied, if they lose their license, they will not be able to get another one. Um, but I think we're just gonna, we're gonna have some discussion about that tonight as well. Uh, business owners, um. Are burned, burned for legislative changes to meet their satisfaction. Um, I don't know what the burned word is there to leave a context there.
Burdened, I think.
Burdened, I'm sorry, burdened. And just so you guys know, uh, when I looked at this on both sides, I was. One of the things that really was a fundamental piece of this was who was burdened to deal with the other side's disagreement. And, um, and that was something I looked at in this as well. So, um. For some commercial business such as daycares, mechanics, tax services, or any other business that operates due strictly, due to strictly permanent resident use. Will have less from STRs because those, those folks are not going to use those services in the city. Um, for folks who decide to use their property as a second home, vacation property, they will not be able to STR their home. Unless they maintain a residence there and live there for at least hundred and eighty-three days, which is residency requirement. They would also have to have their license here, et cetera. So anybody who had their home, they get older, they want to move down to a, a, a lower elevation or whatever for health reasons. They wouldn't have, they wouldn't be able to STR their home, you know, in the meantime, and keep their home that they had in Willen Park to visit, let their family visit, you know, or whatever. Um, is that the last on that one? Okay, thank you. Okay, so, yeah, there we go. So, uh, for the, um, you know, the Wild West here, we have housing will be limited in some, whoa. Housing be limited in some quantity for permanent residential use for owners and long-term rentals. Until the market is saturated or STR stabilized to what the market will support. For residents who do not want STRs in their neighborhood, residential neighborhoods. They want to tolerate them or activate their NHOA or their HOA will have to create or adjust their bylaws to disallow use. The residents are burdened to create change in their HOAs and bylaws and work to change, uh, legislation through citizen action. Or call the police for problematic, problematic STRs. And for some commercial businesses such as daycares, mechanics, services, et cetera, and if you could just scroll down for me a little bit there. Um. And other businesses that operates do strictly permanent residential use will have less business from STRs. Alright, and for the cap one here, it was, uh, some, some property owners get to use their property right for STRs. For STR use, but others are denied the same right to a conditionally permitted property use, which also affects those who retire, want to live there. Uh, live in their house part-time, earn income in the meantime, and I listened to you all about property rights and market and all this stuff. And, um, I don't know how any of you could support caps and say that you're right in that house in that, uh, zone. Is somehow okay, but their property right somehow is not. I, I just couldn't get past that, so. Uh, for the thirty-one applicants, they will not be issued licenses. Of course, they were issued licenses, but there was, uh, I guess. In all, there was about, uh, thirteen to fifteen more or something, and they came in over the last couple of months. And so we had some more information on that that came through. Uh, but at this time, when I wrote this last week, I, uh. I had the understanding that those thirty-one were kind of in waiting, so for that set, because they applied during the seven-day period. So for the residents who do not want STRs in residential areas, uh, they will accept an STR and can be the next to their, uh, next to their residents. Business owners are getting burdened, uh, for legislative change to meet their satisfaction. So in the other case, the, uh. The, uh, residents are burdened to do something about it. In this case, the, uh, uh, business owners are burdened to do something about it. Um. The residents are burdened to create change, uh, HOA bylaws. Same thing as the other one. So in this one, you know, the residents also have a burden if they want to change that and they don't want them there. And then again, um, you know, disadvantages that those folks that are staying there are probably not using services. They're not doing that. They didn't come to Willen Park from Texas to do their taxes. So, um, can we go ahead and scroll down to the final thoughts here? Okay, so I'll, I'll just say, um. These are my final thoughts and not anybody else's, and when I wrote this, I didn't confer with anybody. Um, I had taken everything I had heard, everything that I had heard from council members, from you folks on both sides. And, um, and wrote these, this list up. There were a couple of things I didn't mention, um, about in the, um. Disadvantages with, uh, property values if people are buying houses for thirty to fifty thousand dollars of value and there's a significant number of those. If I have to pay one cent tax because my property value was, um, you know, assessed higher than it should have been artificially. That wasn't good, that was not good for me. I didn't want to pay an extra dime for that, so hopefully you will buy them and for what their real, real value is. Um, the other thing was that folks that live, uh, that make enough money, have the right credit, all that sort of thing. Um, if they have the median income of those neighborhoods, then they should be able to buy a house there. So we wouldn't want to take all the inventory off and not allow them, you know, to live here if they wanted to because they are in that income bracket. This is a premium area. It's expensive. So, alright, so for this, uh, this first option here. Basically removes financial harm from STR operators. I mean, I think we've kind, or owners, I think we've kind of discussed all that a little bit last time as well. You know, um, there would be no new use of, uh, permitted in the residential zones for. Um, new non-owner occupies in this. And, um, everybody would get to operate. So my final thought on this is even if you took, accepted this one. You're still going to be way over the caps, and now I think we would, we'd be even more over that, so. Uh, because the thirty-one are now included in, so they're not, they're not actually in waiting, they're already there. Um. So it also, uh, this option also restricts property use with zoning, um. STRs will be defined in the code and added to the use table, whether council allows the use or they don't allow it. But it'll be defined at least, and we can work from that. You know, disturbance complaints, police, uh, issues, whether or not it's an STR, we want to know. I want to know what the difference is between, um. Uh, you know, before I'm going to restrict property, I'd like to know what is the difference between the ratio in criminal and nuisance complaints between residents who live there. And the STR owners. What's the difference there is, are the STRs way more than residents or are we? Cause we look at character of the neighborhood. Well, if you're not changing the character of the neighborhood, there's not all, we're not seeing any difference, and I want to know that. I want to have that data. I don't, I know you folks have told me and I listened. Um, but both of you said, one said it's not a problem, we do the right thing, one said it's bothering me, it's terrible, and neither one had any real data to back. Neither one had any real data to back up, we didn't have anything we collected, we didn't have an economic impact study, we didn't have. Real police reporting to identify if the, if that was the owner on the property or not when they were there. And then we can look up the address to see if it's an S T R, if it wasn't, so I mean, there's, there's ways that we could actually look this stuff up, but we didn't do any of that. Probably should have been done by the planning commission to do this impact study before we even. Decided that we were going to do anything. Um, we were already operating for over two years unrestricted. And so I thought, I, I really would like to see that kind of stuff done. And I wanted to compare between this and that, what would be the real difference between? If we were to legacy license everyone and they're here forever, or we let them operate while we get, collect data. And, and if there are more, that's even more data we're going to collect, it could even prove to be more of a problem. So um, or not. And so um, can you scroll up just a bit here?
Yeah.
So that, so we can see that, that uh.
The other way.
Yeah, there we go. Um, or did I catch everything in the first?
Yeah, you wanted to come down to the. The conditions that you were.
Yeah, yeah, so that's, this is the second one, so that was the first one I just finished up, right? So with the second one here, and these, again, these are my final thoughts, not, not anybody else on council. So don't hold them accountable for my, if you disagree with me. Uh, this option is uh. What, you know, we're looking at a one to two year timeframe, and I only put two years because that was just the max possible. If we ask for the police study, you know, police to capture whether, what crime is happening or nuisance is happening. For everyone, not just S T Rs, but everyone. So we can compare that, we can get our economic study done, that should be, we could get that in the twenty twenty-three budget for sure. And I've talked to Michael about that, we do have the money, that's exactly what that money is for. Um, and we should use it for that. Get that done, and, and then the housing study is already, that was already voted on and approved, so that will happen. So um, that's some, that's information that you could use to make a real decision and discern between both sides. Saying what they believe is either they're being bothered by them, or they're not bothering anybody and they're fine. So then. We can get this data back, hopefully we'll get that back within, you know. Twelve, thirteen months here, if we started to do this stuff immediately. We'd have everything back in that time. And then once all that data came back, the planning commission could take a look at that, and they could say, okay. There is a problem, or there is not a problem, or we recommend this based on what we have here. Why are you, you, you know, we're gonna have a five hundred foot, you know, uh, difference, so now again, we're back to this person can operate, but this person can't. In the same zone, but why? What, what showed you, what, what, what information do we really have, other than we just took something from some other city and applied it? And let me tell you, there is a ton of cities out there that do a ton of different things, but I want to know what's good for our city, I want to know what our city needs and what. Regulation it would need, what uh, allowance it would need, do we need to have caps, do we need to have regulations, should we have more S T Rs? I want to know what's good for our city, not for anybody else. And, and, and I looked at the Colorado Springs model and I thought. Well, that looks pretty good, you know, we, we already have a lot of operating, it'll be a long time before we get down to, you know, probably four percent or less, so. Um, are we really, what are we really doing here? Uh, in the meantime, when we could be doing this in the meantime, and going ahead and getting this used to find, and then getting our, our, if you have violations. Now, the residents that are unhappy about them, if they've got a, an, an S T R that's acting up next to them. Well, now they can actually do something about it, whereas right now, all they can do is complain and be mad. And, and, and then the other side says, we're doing good, they're, they're, they're lying. Well, I, I don't know, but I want to find out, and so um. So residents can, you know, initiate that process. Uh, or residents can, can uh, actually, you know, fight a bad S T R next to them, hopefully everybody would be good. Uh, do their, the right thing. Um, so anyways, after we reviewed that data, it went to the uh, planning commission, then they could make a recommendation to council. Council can also see the data that came back, we can see what the police reporting was for that year. We can see what the economic impact is on the, on the community. We can uh, see what the housing, you know, requires. Uh, what are we looking at here, who are we trying to house? Um, you know, um, I'm not a fan of putting them into the multifamily housing, just because I, I, we are a city and we are looking at our housing, we pay money for housing studies. Um, because we do look at how, what zoning we're going to plan based on. What we know that we need for our community, for people to live here and work here. But, you know, uh, somebody in a low uh, income job is not buying a five or six hundred thousand dollar house. But they might very well buy, you know, a condo, is that fair? I don't know. Uh, it's for us to discuss tonight, but I, but it's just, it's a way um, to preserve some housing in our community for folks. Um, that, that work here and not raise the price of everything, because we have to import all of our workers from Colorado Springs. Our police all have to drive from Colorado Springs or somewhere else because they can't afford to live here in our town, so I have, so I'm looking at that as well. So. And if residents don't like it, they can also initiate a process to make the change with the large number of signatures. Um, to get that done, then I'd support that if that's what the residents really want, if you speak out and do that, and you take that time, then, then I'll, then I would, I would support what the residents want. Alright, um. It seems this may be reason, maybe the most reasonable option, we want to entertain changing and allow use from intended. From the one, you know, one single family living quarters used to current demand, I hear, I kept hearing change, and I heard that Colorado, uh, Willam Park used to be uh, uh. A, a, a community where folks bought their second house, and it was a retirement or a, a vacation area, retirement area, that sort of thing. We've evolved over time, become something different, I, two years ago, uh, I saw the uh. Twenty thirty envision plan, I watched what the residents said, had nothing to do with S T Rs. And they live showed what uh, what the residents wanted for their town. And you can go look that up, that is, that's out there on the website. Um. So, so yeah, things do change, and we do have to, to change with that, and we do. So maybe we're moving back to that, I don't know, and maybe two years from now, we'll change from that, I don't know. But, but I want, we're going to do that, I want to know why, I want to have a reason for it. And I, I don't want to hear conjecture on why I'm making decisions up here that affects people's lives. So. I would say this is the most reasonable option that we wanted, that I, for me to want to entertain and allow the use. Uh, I would say that um. You know, current demand from everyone, investors, people wanting to own a second vacation home, want to visit anytime or an income. Uh, in their unoccupied times that they're not there, can you scroll uh, up for me there a little bit? Other way. I always say up and people go down, and so I, I understand. I, I do, um, I want to make sure that we got the rest of it though there. Which I don't think we did. Um, okay, so that's good right there. So S T Rs will at least be defined in the code. And the citizens would have something uh, to actually stop a bad X, S T R next to them, and it's a pretty strict requirement. Um, you know, two violations in twelve months, and you're, you know, you can lose your license for. Whether it's forever or twenty-four months, we've talked about both. Those are pretty strict, so I'd imagine that people would be on their best behavior and let their residents know not to cause problems. And they would screen who goes there, you know, if they get a bad rating, they're probably not going to want to become their property. So uh, that. So it'll be defined for that purpose, and then, you know, we can fight that code another day. Um, but for me. You know, to, but for me to vote this option. As my number one option, I would want economic, the economic impact study agreed to, to happen ASAP, which I'm told we can do. Uh, and how, do we know how long that would take, Michael? Uh, just like.
I don't know if we got a timeline for that. With the time.
No, I, I reached out to two agencies to get estimates, but they did not give me a time.
They didn't give you a time, okay. Uh, and then uh, again. A, a planned review, so economic impact study agree to ASAP, a planned review for both the impact and housing study already voted to happen. And the police chief to ensure uh, that when officers, that officers capture whether or not, you know, the property is an S T R, but I want to capture all data to compare it, so I know if there is an actual disparity between. Current S T R owners and uh, and regular residential properties that are occupied owners or occupied renters through a long term. Um, and then uh. Let's see here. Alright. Uh, whether, and then, and then uh. All calls with a synopsis of how many calls were either crime or nuisance in both cases. Uh, with one year of captured data. Once all the data is collected, it goes planning commission for review, for recommendation on, on whether changes are required or not. And council can approve or deny restrictions after that evaluation. And I believe these conditions are reasonable and, and required. And um. And I believe that uh. And I don't think I, I'd capture this in there, but there's, there's not a, a lot of different, there's probably not going to be a lot of change between. You know, option one and option two in a short period of time. So um. I don't think that we'll see much, but at least we'll have the use to find, at least the citizens have a bite, and we can make some decisions. And I know it's kicking the can down the, the road a year, but at least we can have some real data. Uh, instead of arguments back and forth of what people believe. Um, or how they feel, I, I'm sorry, I don't, I don't care about your feelings. I want some, I want something to prove what we're doing here. Um, and I don't want to make decisions based on, on emotion and. Uh, and that sort of thing, so. Sure, some people aren't happy about that, some might be, but that's, that's how I feel, so if you scroll down here, just so that you know where I stand on this, so that I'm not uh. I'm not playing any games with anybody, I don't want anybody to think I haven't done this, I've sent this to every council member, and I've sent this to some staff members as well. Um. That uh, I, I like, I like one, if the conditions are agreed to, and I like two if not, and I will vote no on caps. So that's where I'm coming from, folks, this I sent to everybody, we had some conversations about that, so when we talked about some conversations, it wasn't like backroom deals, it was. I sent this to everybody and they. Put their input in, uh, and that's kind of how it was, and unfortunately, you could talk to everybody, or as much as I'd like to, because I've had extremely busy work week this week. Um, and uh, be great if I could just take a nap up here right now, but unfortunately, I can't. So um, so with that, I will pass this back to the council for their comments and um, and thank you.
So, it's nine oh four, so we're going to go ahead and take a um. Do you guys want five or ten minutes?
Five.
Five, good with five, we'll take a five minute break.
Hustle.
Okay.
All right. So we're resuming from break. Walt Rusty, if you want to start and give David a minute to.
We were trying to figure out what the next steps would be, which would be, we, we were saying, we think we would be going to public comment and then after the public comment, we would either.
You would vote on, he's, he was saying you would vote on Roberts, but if you vote on Roberts, and then his doesn't pass, that kills it and it goes back to the planning.
No, it doesn't. You can actually make a different motion with different from what.
You can. I'm just saying if you let his go all the way through and we vote on it, that does kill it. If you want to make amendments to what he said, then you need to make a motion to amend the motion. And we go line by line, we vote one by one, just like we did last time, in the same crazy tedious manner.
Yes, it's painful.
Okay.
But David is correct.
Okay.
So.
That's what I was saying. I'm trying to figure out what the the correct way to do this.
But I think we should hear public comment.
Yeah, that we, you know, public comment is.
Excellent. Let's do that. So they don't have to be waiting for us. So Suzanne, when you're ready, we're going to go ahead and get started with public comment.
Okay. So we'll do like we've done, and I think I told you 10, I think nine, now we have 11 people.
Okay.
And we'll do what we've done in the past. I'll call the first speaker up and have the second speaker waiting on deck.
Okay.
Okay. So first we have Jeremy Lyons with Jamie Travis on deck.
All right. Hey, good evening. I'm Jeremy Lyons. And I live right here in Woodland Park. So I just want to start out, thank all the council. We're trying to find a balanced solution that is really grounded in accountability. And it's not overburdened with heavy regulations. So you probably put me in, uh, the investor category because I sold a mutual fund after 15 months during Iraq and I bought the house across the street. So that my mom can visit her grandson. Now believe me, no one is more vested in ensuring that our guests, our neighbors, respect the rest of the neighborhood than we are. All right. Now, having said that, I printed out the short term rental complaint, which I found on the city website, you scroll down under STRs. This is the form. So if you have a true grievance against an STR who is violating city ordinances, then here's your form. I've got more printed off and I can show you where, where to find it if you need to, if you need to find on the website. I just ask you to be reminded, Matthew, not me, said love your name. Okay. With that, other way, I'd like to comment on the, on the current city code and the PowerPoint presentation for the last meeting. Now I noticed that much of the code was written, or at least last updated in about 1996. Now that's a, that's a year that's near and dear to my heart because it's a year that I graduated high school and enlisted in the army. Now, what if I went back to my high school graduation and I told some of my buddies something to the effect of OMG. I'm in Uber. It's a Tesla. Can you text me a pin to the Airbnb? We're headed back to Netflix and chill lol. Now they probably tell me Jeremy, you're crazy. None of what you just said makes sense. Well, in my mind, neither does using a code that is 26 years old that to guide the current housing reality here in town. I see the city code. It's not a original founding document of our nation. It's not handwritten by our forefathers. I believe it needs to be periodically reviewed and updated. And so I'd ask who's, whose duty is it to do that? Because I'm willing to help out. In my humble opinion, the city code should have been updated when the first short term rental permit was sold, which I believe was sometime around 2002. You could check my own on the math, but the date, but that is when I believe the city started collecting taxes for short term rentals. I believe that the city and city code is in violent conflict with itself. I, I just think that in order for it to be useful for us, that we just need to take a look at it. Okay. I, I did a council monada. I love seeing the, what I'm going to call a decision support matrix. Uh, I believe it's, uh, got the flavor of military decision making.
Well, I spent 27 years and I hope so.
Okay. All right. MVP. I love it. All right. So I feel like we are moving past this radical idea of shutting down STRs that are already established in residential, residential areas. Okay. I think, and I think that's a good thing. And, um, moving past that, I just asked that, that we kind of think through if we pass an ordinance that we war game it. So we think through all the second and third order effects. What are the unintended consequences? What are the branches and sequels that are going to occur once we drop this, this ordinance? Okay. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Hey, is, um, Jamie Travis in the audience? Or if you're online, please raise your hand. We'll move on. Next we have Mary Sikowski and on deck we have Lydia McCallarin.
All right. I'm not as well polished. I'm not going to lie because everything tonight. Uh, Mary Sikowski, I live at 3330 Regent Drive in Woodland Park. Just a couple of comments. Section nine I like, um, and it, and it just begs the question, why not scrap all the restrictions? And thank you, council member, for the matrix. I, um, thought that was excellent. Why don't we do the due diligence first? Since when do we make policy that restricts people and property owners without getting the data first? So I think that that is an excellent, um, route to go. Uh, council member Zuluaga, there are numerous cases that support definitions of short term rentals being consistent with residential use. I think I emailed all the council the other day with nine, citing 19 cases that support that definition. The problem with what was presented in council member Zuluaga's motion is that it defines primary residents. It does not define owner occupant, owner occupied property. Um, so you've got a problem there and some holes. So, but all that to say that we need to limit ordinance 1431 to adding the definitions of short term rental unit and short term rental business to the municipal code. We need to add short term rental units as the line item number four to the, uh, table of permitted uses and allow the newly defined short term rental units in all zones as a free market. We need to continue the license process for short term rental businesses to have the ability to remit the required lodging taxes. And we need to cut out all of the, uh, components of this that generate restrictions on owners. Um, and do the due diligence. Thank you.
Thank you. Hey, Lydia McCarron. Lauren, excuse me. She's on Zoom. So when you're ready, Lydia, you may speak.
I said a council and mayor's Lydia McLaren. I'm with State Cozy Vacation Rentals and a member of the Vacation Rental Management Association. And I am here representing two of our owners who are considered, I guess, what you would call investors in the Woodland Park area. And I just, I don't have my agenda in front of me because it's been, I didn't make it up there because of the snow, unfortunately. But I wanted just to address a couple of things and also just maybe just heed some information and, and the process and how quickly this is all moving. Um, which I feel like has been expressed by several people, um, the extent to which this moving, it's, it's, yes, we want to get through this quickly, but I want you to understand this is not an easy process. Mayor mentioned that last time. It is not an easy process. Now, there's two issues that I'd like to bring up that are, um, if not even issues or examples that I would like, like Mary had said, and has been brought up before, that we just address, um, maybe just not rush the decision, but take time to get the facts. Take time to understand things before we actually formalize any sort of ordinance. There are two rulings and, um, I know somebody had mentioned previously, hey, Woodland Park, you know, we can't compare it. We want to do what's unique to Woodland Park. But what also happens is there are other cities in Colorado that are going up against the same issues. This is not a new thing across the country, right? Everybody's doing it. Um, but there are similar small towns like Woodland Park that are also trying to do very similar things. They're a couple of years ahead of us. They've already gone through the ordinances and they've used very similar, um, data that like, or verbiage that is in this current ordinance. And I would like to present that as, hey, let's use that city, which is, um, Colorado Springs, uh, or sorry Frisco, and just observe them, um, Summit County and also Frisco, both of them have made decisions and verbiage based on the ordinance. However, um, since then, the Colorado Court of Appeals and the, um, Fifth Judicial Court of Appeals has spoken out against those. One of them relating to the, what is considered the zoning, meaning that for tax, that tax that I'm going to mess this up, but you cannot tell somebody to residentially, you cannot, oh gosh, I'm going to ruin this because I just saw the time. So, um, residentially, I sent an email to the mayor and so I can send that to all of you guys. But then also when it comes to, um, the non-owner and owner occupied and dictating how an owner has, uses their time or uses their, their property. So just two court cases, New Orleans and also, uh, Woodland Park, or sorry Frisco. Sorry, I just ran out of time. So I'm done. It's hard when you're not there because I just can't see it. I got distracted and don't have my notes in front of me because I wasn't able to get up there. And so I'm doing it remotely and it's challenging. So.
It is, it is harder when you're on Zoom, surprising.
Yeah. So yeah, very much so. So I just, I just asked that you look at the, the case, um, that Frisco is using with the New Orleans rulings that they have now changed and also the Court of Appeals stating how zoning, um, commercial versus resident is, and using those as data and other, um, ways, other, just looking at and using it as a tool to move forward as far as just not rushing this process. That's all I'm asking. We want to be reasonable and we want to hear you.
Sure. And I think others have shared those cases with us as well. So thank you.
Awesome.
Okay. We have Shawna Smith and on deck we have Nathan Manor.
Thanks so much for letting me speak with you again. I just really appreciate this evolution of process and I thank you for the time you've spent and I'm just in awe and it makes me even want to be more and more involved. This has been so fun for me.
Not for me.
So, uh-oh.
This is volunteer. I just want to do that.
Yeah, yeah. I know, I know.
Um, there's some boards that could use you.
So can I start it over? Okay, there we go.
No, I have the timer going on here. It, the internet is not cooperating at the moment.
Okay, we'll start now.
Thanks. Sorry. I just wanted, uh, to relate to you again, a little bit of more of that personal kind of, um, importance of the decision to allowing SDRs to really thrive here in Woodland Park. And I have a passion for this darling town and it's the restaurants and the activities and the gift shops and the clothing stores and in all the grocery stores. And guess what? I believe that STRs are that also create the character and uniqueness of this town. And who doesn't love a new restaurant, right? In Woodland Park? Seriously. It gives that, it, it gives us the same feeling, um, what we should have enthusiasm for STRs as well. Because it gives that, that really, um, that character to that guest as well. Um, it's when they go into that perfect place that has the cute little setups and the chocolates on the sides and they, 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 they bond with, um, Woodland Park. And it's charming and the, the tourists love it. Um, financially, uh, things are getting tougher, right? The town, as, as many towns like it or not, have relied heavily on STR availability to support their merchants and creates a healthy balance in our community. We have enjoyed the benefits of STRs during tough times as well as very good times. It's not the time to turn off highly desirable ingredients in the formula of a successful community. I've been reading lately, the U-Pass Historical Society and Pike's Peak Museum book. It, the county that was published in 2016 and, and guess what? It's rich in tourism. 1880s, the railroad brought merchants to feed the, the growing farmers and loggers. In the 1920s and 30s, people wanted to live here and they built dude ranches and hotels and small cabins and camps. And that provided for increased tourism. Many of these owners were entrepreneurs and the slogan was watch Woodland Park grow. These cabins, hotels are not building commercial zones, but they were a part of successful tourism balance. Not that you need a lesson on history of Woodland Park, but we need to remember that we do better when rich with, when we have a rich tourism economy. Last week I walked down Highway 24 and I just had discussions with the local business owners and about the issues that were happening with STRs. Um, small business owners were scared about how their decisions were being, uh, debated and how they would be impacted on them as well as us. Mary Jo Larson of the Cow Hand said, after 57 years of business, I would request that the councils take the path of less government and less control and not create an environment that hinders visitors from out of town that hurts our tourism. We have to rely on tourism to survive and I would request that you would not stifle short term rentals in homes. Thank you. I also talked to an anonymous small business owners that told me that he depends on the tourists to keep him functioning throughout the year, especially in the winter, because he says the locals are just not enough. So it's the merchants who build and make this town thrive. They depend on tourism. We need to support our businesses and this decision to port STRs openly. STRs are a part of the history of merchants in this community. And if you look at it, merchants are like donut mill or STRs are like donut mills and loafing jugs and Asian fusion and AJs are just like that because they're contributing to the community. We were no longer logging or having agriculture to support our, our economy. It's as, it's, it's us and tourism. And when's the last time you've driven through Texas or Oklahoma or Kansas? Do you see the boarded up towns? They're ugly little towns. They're, they aren't here. There's a reason why is because there's a balance is kept and people come to see thriving merchants to be a part of the character of Woodland Park.
And I don't mean to interrupt you, but your time is.
My time's up and I keep talking. The same could happen here. We don't allow this process. So the last quote from, no, I'm kidding. But thank you. I just want to say, thank you.
Thank you.
We have, um, Nathan Manor and Matt McCracken on deck.
Good evening. Um, through all the comments and, and discussions and, and, uh, we, we spoke last week and I, um, reflected on the discussions that we had and, and it's, uh, even through all the amendments and, um, through all these comments, it's really, in the end, what we're still talking about is taking away someone's freedom, someone's right to do what he wants to with his property. And whether it's owner occupied, non-owner occupied, in the end, you still have to say, I am taking this right away from someone new to come in and buy property and build well. And taking away those personal freedoms affects everyone. And where does it stop after that? And there's nothing constitutionally that justifies taking this right away. And I encourage that thought to be reflected before voting on taking that right away.
Matt McCracken, Mike Nakai on deck. And again, I apologize, but I do have a timer set on my computer.
Someone can raise their hand like when there's 30 seconds left or something. A lot of these people know me. I'm Matt McCracken, uh, longtime resident of Woodland Park. I love this town. Uh, my wife's born and raised in this town. Um, my wife and our kids and I travel to Colorado mountain towns and all over the west side of the country. Every single time we travel without a camper behind us, we stay in an SDR. We do not, since, since Airbnb has been a thing, we have not used a hotel room. So having said that, and knowing that many people like, many, many people are like-minded. Um, if we were to come to this beautiful town that we live in and there were no Airbnb's SDRs available for us to stay in, the likelihood of us staying in Woodland Park to spend time to walk through the park, to, to walk down Main Street, spend money, eat at a restaurant, go to the brewery. Um, it would, it would be a pass through, it would be a pass through town for us. We'd go to Breckenridge. We'd go somewhere else. Um, so the importance of this element of lodging in our town is, um, it, it like, it's personal for me. And I mean, I'm a resident of this town. I live, I live three blocks from here. And I love this town, but I, I also know that when we stay in an SDR, we respect it like it's. we respect it like it's our own home because guess what? We know that someone like us owns that home. And and that's what we would expect from someone else. It's not like a hotel room. I mean, in college, I don't even wanna talk about the hotel rooms it stayed in, anyway. But the the point is, is um the benefit and and the enrichment that S D R lodging brings to our small community like it does many other small mountain communities um is an amazing enrichment. It it brings people inside of our town, even people who come and stay in a hotel room in our town. They don't see it the way someone stays in an S D R does. So I I just wanna share that. So thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Mike Nakai, Arnie Sparnins, you're on deck.
Good evening, Council. Mike Nakai, Woodland Park. I wanna think it was about two or three years ago, Suzanne, you can correct me if I'm wrong, that we changed our official notice of the city's business from the paper to the city website.
Correct.
Um so you know, the the official notice location is the city website, which is down. It has been down since this afternoon. I went to download the packet and couldn't get to it. Um that is also where I get the Zoom link to join the meeting. Now, I understand that we've taken steps to send the link out over Twitter, Instagram or Facebook. None of those I would ever get cuz I don't do those things and I don't think I'm alone in this town. Okay, so I submit to you, there's a number of people out there that are not here in the audience. Does it, did it, does it question why on the public hearing, we have half as many people as we did for the first reading? I think the weather skilled some people off and they were gonna join on Zoom and I submit to you, a bunch of them aren't able to join cuz the link's down, you know, the the way that they normally get in there. I I don't think we want to hold the public hearing on the most controversial topic that this city has had in years when we have the city website down and I I don't know, maybe Nina can jump in and say whether um I'm questioning whether we have a properly noticed meeting. I can tell you that earlier in the year
We do.
in the planning commission, the packet was not published on the website. We proceeded with the meeting. Michael even went and made copies of the packet for the members of the audience. But if I'm not mistaken, that ordinance was pushed to the next meeting because it wasn't properly noticed.
I know that we typically don't respond to public comment and I'll give you your time back, Mike. But I do have to say that ordinance has been posted for over a week.
I I understand that and and I and 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 it kinda comes to the unintended consequences when we made that decision to move it from the paper to the website. Okay, if the website's down the day of the meeting, I mean, what if it's down for the three days before the meeting? What if it's down for the week, you know, four of the five days? You you know, you see I'm getting at, I think it's a gray area. I I just don't know that you wanna push forward with with that question. You know, over it. I think in the interest of transparency, we should table nine A, move forward with the moratorium. And uh I would suggest you guys go into a work session so that you can talk to one another openly as opposed to these one-on-one meetings where we're apparently have miscommunication. We apparently have people that aren't getting emails and we have people that aren't reading emails. And but in order to get around the open meetings law, sit down, have a work session, hash this out, put a clean ordinance in front of the public that they can review cuz I suspect tonight you're prepared to make amendments that look nothing like what they have seen so far. That's just my two cents. Thank you very much.
Okay, we have Arnie Sparnins and Jerry Penland, you're on deck.
All right, honorable mayor, city council members. Um I did have prepared items to talk about, but since I I prepared all my comments based on what I saw posted, which is nothing like either one, anything else that went on in the discussion. Um I think it just calls the point. It's like, yeah, yeah, we've had a good process. I mean, the city started this a year ago in November. You know, about five, six months ago, they started the community engagement. There's lots of information, lots of good work, lots of background stuff in terms of the issues and in terms of strategies that all of a sudden we seem to have forgotten that they exist. I, you know, I think we just need to put a reset on this process. Kill this ordinance as it is. It's taken so many permutations. You know, you realistically, you're not gonna be able to wordsmith something out. I mean, even what came out of last, you know, last public comment session, so I I looked at what was posted and as a result of that, it went through the red line iteration and it went through um and it went through the quote clean version and the, you know, it missed a lot of the amendments that were out there. There there was no reference to, I mean, so it wasn't even a conflicted ordinance. It was a incomplete ordinance that didn't include a lot of the amendments that were proposed that seemed to have disappeared. I mean, there was no mention of S T R caps. We know that went away, but there was no mention about restricting S T Rs to only occupy uh units in residential zones. And there was also no mention of the grandfathering of the legacy licenses, you know, which doesn't show up in the ordinance as posted for today. Um it's just, yeah, we're getting set to create a have a, you know, havoc, a free-for-all, um and it's gonna hurt people. I mean, so you look at, you know, I listened very closely what people have been saying for their their concerns and very closely what people have been saying, you know, in the you know, in that community engagement process about concerns, you know, first of all, I just wanna clarify, neighborhood character is not about having law-abiding violations in your neighborhood. It's about fundamentally changing the character of the neighborhood with having a lot of different people present, having you know, different track traffic patterns, a lot of other things that come as a result of that, so um I just think, yeah. Yeah, and heard some other comments about, you know, Summit County and Frisco, which is you know, fine, but it's not relevant to us. I mean, we're we're over seventy-five percent owner occupied housing units and in Woodland Park and we need to respect, you know, the rights of those people that live in their homes out here too and so um I just think, yeah, you know, I think we need to take the three, you know, takeaways that we had. The takeaways that I would summarize is everybody seems to universally recognize that good neighbor guidelines are needed and there there's been no controversy or no issues with those and if there is, then we don't care personally, um because they're they're just needed. Um the other thing that from a neighborhood character perspective, the one thing that fundamentally addresses neighborhood character is only owner occupied S T Rs, you know, in residential districts. And that causes the concern that a lot of people have spoken up about and said, well, what about I I've already bought this S T R and I do this. And it's like, well, that's exactly what the legacy licensing does. You know, the grandfathering clauses. So you address the fundamental key concern of existing S T R owners is you're covered, you know, you just address the concerns of residential areas by saying we're not gonna change the character. You know, the definition of a quiet residential neighborhood that you think you live in.
And Arnie, I hate to interrupt, but your time is up.
But um pass the moratorium and send this one back to to be worked through the city and the planning commission. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, Jerry Penland with Susie Bradley on deck.
This is what I was gonna talk about. Know what to do with it. Do we want the wild, wild west here in Woodland Park? No, citizens tell me that's not what we want. But that's what I hear from the short-term rental community. No restrictions whatsoever. Anytime you talk about restrictions, oh no, we can't do that. We can't have any restrictions. We want the wild, wild west. We want a total ban. Some citizens do. Some cities do. They're in the courts right now, so who knows where that's gonna go. That's not what we need here either. Short-term rentals are good for the city in some respects. And we heard it, they're good for businesses. Walk around and see all the businesses and add people for restaurants and all, sure. Having within walking distance is even better. They get to experience Woodland Park for real. To be in walking distance of the downtown businesses. I'm from the south. You can probably tell. I'm from the south. You talk about property rights. Would you let me put a pig farm in my neighborhood? You ever been by a pig farm? You probably wouldn't. But if you won't let me do that, that takes care, that takes away my property rights. That's what I wanna do, not from the south. So if we wanna talk about property rights, let's talk about pig farms or I've got a lot of other examples I can use. Okay, so we don't have unlimited property rights. I heard something tonight that bothers me a little bit, but I don't, I know the details. I heard that our pending list went from thirty-one to fifteen. How did that happen? We're in a moratorium. Did people take their name off the list? Or did we license them? What did we do? It hit from thirty-one to fifteen. And also, is there a on the back of a piece of paper list of others that wanna as soon as moratorium's up? We don't know about. So we don't know what the full extent is here. What happened to go from thirty-one to fifteen? Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, Susie Bradley and then Steve Starr is on deck and he's online.
Hello, everyone. Bring this down to my short level here. Uh Susie Bradley, one hundred Mills Ranch Road, sixteen-year resident of Woodland Park. Um owner, operator of ground control, essentially fit and plush getaways. First, I did want to address, Mr. Penland, your personal property rights. Pig farms, having gas stations in our front yards, that's not a good neighbor policy. Negated. Sorry, sorry about that. I'm sure you have twenty different options to say, but I'm just saying, as a good neighbor in our in our town and as a good citizen, obviously that wouldn't follow suit with the conformity of our town. So I just think that that's something that keeps coming up that I think is a little extravagant. Um what I just wanted to say is um I I there's a lot of things I was gonna say that I don't need to and I don't wanna waste your time. Um I wanna say that I see the difference in the presence of the public servant that is showing up and the remaining personal agendas on this panel. I it's so refreshing to hear that some of you truly listen to us and on either side, on either side, I respect it all. But you really wanna collect the data first and I really appreciate that, Mr. Ott. Thank you very much for your assessment. I think it was really wonderful to literally listen to both sides and go through. We're not the wild, wild west. We wanna be good city um citizens. We wanna be good owners, operators. We wanna be good neighbors. And we also want to make sure that there is data collected so that we do know, we wanna learn ourselves. If there's an issue within short short-term rentals, we wanna know that so we can adjust ourselves and our very high standards. And we can also weed out the few incidences and I won't say bad seeds. There are probably more incidences. That's just a management issue, friends. This is a possible management issue issue. That's pretty small. Now, when it comes to the personal agendas that remain on this panel, we know that some people just don't want it or they have their own reasons for commercial usage only. I don't think that that is something that needs to be um pushed because like you said, um Mayor Labar, you said you guys are legislators. You can change and add things in the code and that's what we're asking and that's what we appreciate. That the definitions are defined, the permits are great. Um this is a residential usage for dwelling, which has been for many, many years. The number nine addition to your um addendum should be the only thing that's passed here. We could really pitch a lot of things that are causing convolution, miscommunication, distracting, it's not benefiting our town. You guys are fighting amongst yourselves because you have your own ideas. I really feel like what you did, Mr. Ott, tonight was very helpful. We believe and Mr. Neil and um Mayor Labar and Ms. Case, we really believe that you're listening to us and we really know that you know we wanna beautify this town. We wanna elevate our property values. We wanna create a unique experience for travelers to come in and for our neighbors to see that we're respecting them as they respect us as well. I just thank you so much.
Thank you. Okay, online we have Steve Starr with Craig Penley on deck. Go ahead, sir, Steve. You can start speaking. Steve?
Unmute yourself. There you go.
Are you able to hear me?
Yes.
Okay, good evening. My name is Steve Starr. I have a second home in S T R at three-two-one Panther Court. I had the opportunity a couple of weeks ago to hear Dr. Thomas Cranawitter speak at the U Pass Cultural Center on the American founding and the greatest anti-slavery movement in history. When slavery was abolished, racial segregation was derived from the efforts of white Americans to keep African-Americans in a subordinate status by ensuring that blacks lived apart from whites in residential neighborhoods. Since this time, this country has come a long way to be a better place for all to live and enjoy. But as I listened, I couldn't help but think there are some within the city of Woodland Park who want to keep S T R guests in a subordinate status by not allowing them in residential neighborhoods. Why? How do S T R guests act differently than their next-door neighbor or any other person in a residential neighborhood? They are simply acting as residents in a home like everyone else. Where is the data, as Councilmember Ott asks, that states otherwise? The city of Woodland Park can do better and should do better and not treat S T R guests as a subclass of people. Let's move forward, not backwards. Let's welcome them into our neighborhoods and let them enjoy all the beauty this town in Colorado has to offer. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, and then finally we have Greg Penley. Sir, you may speak when you're ready.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hey there, good evening. My name's Craig Penley. I live at twelve-sixty Ponderosa Way. I spoke about two meetings ago. Uh thank you for hearing me out again tonight. So I had a couple of things. Uh first of all, Mr. Ott, I do truly appreciate uh the excel you put together. Um two things I would like to ask in the council, and again, I think that was already mentioned, but just a little bit of clarity a- across the board. Um again, not being able to go on the website, see what's being discussed, that is an issue that is slightly hard to, for the public to wrap their heads around what's going on. And then when we come into these meetings, we see a lot of things, you know, brought forward. Um and we have to quickly adjust and read through that and try to get a good understanding. So I would ask, the council considers um extreme amount of clarity as we push forward in this, so we have a very clear understanding of what we're talking about. Um and with the presentation, the Excel sheet that Mr. Ott provided earlier, uh two things I would like to address. Uh one of them is the businesses included it in there. Um when it came down to the advantages, disadvantages, I saw a lot of like the childcare facilities, all this stuff. That's probably a very small fraction and I don't know the exact numbers of the businesses operating within Woodland Park. You know, it was already mentioned about Cow Hand, the Dona Hole. All the businesses on the main street, the restaurants, there's a lot more businesses other than just the childcare facilities and some other facilities that depend on, yes, us, the citizens who live here full-time, but also the tourist community. You know, like um everything on the main street. Another one I'd like to bring forward, um I do think it's a good idea to bring in the data uh with police reporting, all this good stuff. However, I'd like to push forward a little bit of a a kind of a warning on that. Um key example, down in Colorado Springs, um I manage a short-term rental management company. We had a neighbor uh beside one of our short-term rentals that messaged us and said, hey, I heard gunshots over this property. We're like, oh my goodness, okay, let's hype in a hyper gear. You know, we're calling everybody, calling the guests, trying to figure out what's going on.
Uh Craig, excuse me. We're having a hard time hearing your words, so I don't know if it's okay. He gets a few more seconds here, but could you speak slowly and eh close to your mic so we can actually hear what you're saying?
Yeah, I apologize about that. Is this better?
Yes.
Okay, sorry about this, yeah. Um just just a caution on the police supports. We had a neighbor saying, hey, there's there's gunshots over this property that was a short-term rental. You know, everybody started freaking out and he's like, I'm going to the city of this, I wanna see this. Like, okay, sir, like, understand. I called the actual guest there. They had a birthday party for a one-year-old and they're popping balloons. And the only thing I caution is, is the biases against short-term renting. Yeah, there, we could pull on police reports, but what is the backside of it? Is it an actual a validated accusation against that short-term rental? Or is it a kid having balloons pop for a one-year-old birthday party? You know, it's quite a bit different and was. You know, it's quite a bit different in what is reported. Other than that, it's all really had, thanks for your time, appreciate it.
Thank you.
And then Mayor Labar, we did have one more person just sign up, and it's Joe Fury.
Okay.
Joe, if you're a bit ready to speak, you may speak.
Mayor and council, um one thing I'd like to say is, I agree with Mike Nakai. I tried to log into the Zoom meeting at six fifty-five and the website was down. I continually kept retrying and retrying, uh I even tried to text somebody on council to see if there was a, a phone number I could dial, dial into. Uh, in between my attempts, I checked my email and then I saw somebody sent me an email with the uh Zoom link, so I do think uh this hearing needs to be extended because I very close, I came very close to giving up and forgetting about this, well, not participating in this meeting. And I did miss the first hour, so I, I request that council consider that. Um, and secondly, uh we've heard from a lot of S T R owners, I'm not an S T R owner. I am a resident who lives here full-time. And I do not think it is right for uh S T Rs to be in residential zones. They were, when all these people bought these properties, they were residential, not commercial. S T Rs are essentially a motel. So where do you draw the line? If my neighbor can open up a motel next to my house, then why can't I open a restaurant in my house? I have the parking on my property. Um, I think they'll let, you know, let the legacy uh exist for people who are already S T Rs. If we're gonna have S T Rs, I like the owner having to live there in the residential areas. But hey, not, the majority of the population of Woodland Park does not own a business in Woodland Park. I commuted to the other side of the spring for twenty years to make my living. Quite frankly, as, as a resident, I would like to see fewer uh tourists coming to Woodland Park. Our, our main highway twenty-four can, can't even handle what we have today. So anyway, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, very good. Alright, so you guys were in the middle of a discussion. And did you finish that? Or did we go to public comment first?
I think so. No, I think we finished and did the spreadsheet and that was it, all comment, and now we can discuss the motion on the floor.
Okay, I'm gonna go ahead then and start with Councilmember Case.
Thank you, Mayor. Um uh after seeing um the uh presentation that Mr. Zuluaga did, it was built upon a green, uh the amended um ordinance with only one amendment in green. And it outlines basically um what Mr. Ott presented uh before the public hearing in the um chart that he did his analysis in. It is not.
No.
No. He used this, though, to pre- prepare what he presented. That's correct. The things in um what Mr. Zuluaga showed earlier that were in green, either line through or not, um were the changes and then the red lines that were stricken um were the changes to the ordinance to incorporate the ideas that Mr. Ott presented earlier. I can read them if I need to. Um, I'll let the attorney guide me, but um I would propose that the motion be amended to reflect this document that reflects what Mr. Ott presented.
We probably should more specifically address um Councilmember Zuluaga's motion, which if we could pull it up, that would be good, we'll have to go page by.
Should we take that motion first?
And then we Well, that was seconded, and now it sounds like you want to make a motion.
Take the motion first, you have to go with the motion to amend the motion first, and then we have to vote individually.
Okay.
So you have to, your motion would have to amend what you either.
So this is what, what's up, so um anything that's yellow or blue, you want, you would want to
Would be removed.
If that's what you're going for.
Yes, ma'am.
Can we get Mr. Zuluaga's version shared to the other council members so we have a copy of it? I don't have a copy of it.
I don't either.
Can you make print? Or do you want it electronically?
You can electronically. Can you send it to them?
And also Nina Williams.
So what I have is I have the motion on the floor by Councilmember Zuluaga and seconded by Councilmember Connors.
So it sounds like, now, when Councilor, he's come seek herself, it sounds like she's making a motion to amend.
Okay. But point of clarification, um from the attorney, if we um if we vote on the motion that Mr. Zuluaga has put forward, and it fails, do we have the opportunity to consider the, this ordinance that I am speaking to now, this evening? The better way to do is to make the amendment. Thank you.
I have a question about it in the meantime. Are the, are the green, is the green that is stricken, that has a line through it, is that stricken? Or is that
No, that's
To be included?
That's what he's saying, that uh was included, uh proposed eleven seventeen by the mayor and three others.
Okay.
So that was, that was
Cause there's lines through some.
Your recommended uh
I could, you know, make sense. So if I, if I put something in green and struck through, it was, it was there and now it's struck, cause I, I couldn't just do green lines, I don't know how to do that, I'm not that sex savvy. So if anything that's green with strike through was in, was in the um ordinance that is in front of you, so if you're gonna make an amendment, you're gonna strike what is in green and strict.
Because there's green that is not stricken through.
Mm-hmm, so that means it's an addition.
So the I don't, okay, I'll just wait and find out what happens.
We're gonna get a line by line.
Yeah.
As well, yeah.
Okay. On page two. Five point two two dot oh one zero. That is green and yellow on the screen.
And can I just ask why, why that was stricken? I, cause I don't know.
Because the ordinance, this talks to defining primary residence, and it has no relevance in the ordinance the way it's been amended.
Okay.
Correct, Nina?
That's the way I I was told um by Councilmember Neil that you um, the consensus didn't want subclasses of, of property ownership, so you I was told to strike anything as it relates to primary residence or owner occupied.
So, okay, so this is
Question.
Yeah.
Things that have lines through them are things that are being asked to be removed because there's also green at, towards the end, that does not have lines through it.
Right, so it's additional.
Right, so those are the things, though, that we had a consensus about.
To add.
To add.
And then strike through is what I was told to strike through.
So that would be a misunderstanding between myself and Ms. Williams. I had no intention of striking this paragraph when I made the telephone call.
So then we were in agreement.
Was, what, what I've done, I make It was my understanding that that was stricken because we were not differentiating between resident, you know,
Primary.
And owner occupied, non-owner occupied, because it was gonna be allowed to everybody. So my words in the telephone trying to convey that have somehow gotten interpreted as strike this paragraph, that I did not say to strike this paragraph. That was not my intent.
Oh, yeah, it's, I know, it says, strike anything that relates to primary residence and owner occupied, any subset of ownership, so that's
Well, I think it's appropriate.
He said, yeah, sorry.
Okay, so I think it's appropriate, though, yes, like you said, yeah, I think it's appropriate to to strike, whether or not it's owner occupied or not, non-owner occupied, there's nothing wrong with identifying the difference. Not, it's, it's just an, uh, metrics we need to track, this is what it is, so. Yeah, I mean, I think we should say it's primary residence, so that if you're talking about owner occupied, that's their primary residence and they are renting rooms out as their primary residence, that's all.
And it's pure
I don't think that'll matter, really. So it's just a definition in there, for that purpose, that's all. I don't think it's, yeah, you're not gonna change it, since it is what it is.
So the motion that Councilmember Zuluaga has, and my record says to leave that in. Correct. So are we changing that Councilmember case?
So we have to vote on these one at a time, so if this is the first one, first amendment that we're gonna work that, then we would need to vote on that if
Only if you're changing
We're changing it.
What he had recommended.
Definitely should just leave it in.
I understand. I thought I was going to read through the whole document.
It's whatever the, the, whatever a motion is, it could be to amend it in ten ways, it could be, it could be one by one, it's up to them.
Yeah. It's easier to go.
It's up to you guys, I'm just saying, you could do either way.
Uh, Nina.
Yes.
Seeing it's already in the original document, do we have to vote on, on a motion? Because I, the, basically what that's saying is it's staying what it was in the, in the original document.
Yeah, that's, that's true. So as long as there's a consensus to leave it, then, then it won't be, doesn't need to be in motion at all. I don't have any problem leaving it, because it's irrelevant. It's irrelevant.
To leave it.
It's in my motion, and it's already in the original, so we wouldn't have to change.
Correct.
Yeah, move on. Yeah, so we don't have to change it.
I don't know that you want to use that version.
Okay, Sarah, would you go down, please? Oh, thank you.
So that one will stay, correct?
That's fine with me. Um, the red strike with regards to the clerk, it's just housekeeping because she will have a designee that will actually do the work.
That came out of Was already, um Anything in red was already um stricken. Approved last time, and if it's not highlighted in yellow or, or blue, hasn't been touched, so we don't, I mean, you don't need to go.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, go to item K on page four. Um, the green, um, that is to take accessory dwelling unit out of here.
I think it's already
Table, it does, does nothing with this, so I think just focus, if you want, well, it's up to you every undo, but if you're looking to look at what Councilmember Zuluaga brought up, it's the yellow and the blue, that's the motion on the table, is the yellow and the blue highlight.
Okay.
But trudence, we should just look at it all.
And that's
We don't miss anything.
Yes.
So I think that with the ADUs, I think it's already a defined use that they can use those rental properties too. So there's actually sections on those and what the test was and all that, so.
Um, it's as long as the owner is on the
Which is, which is, yeah, as long as the owner's in, uh, yeah, owns, is living in the main residence.
Well, when we did the, the definitions research, that we discovered that, and it was like, oh, look at here, yeah. So, yeah, yeah. Now, I will say that with those ADUs, even though they could be used as rental properties, we could, and they could have that use, there was uh a distance requirement in there, in some zones, it was six hundred feet apart uh and some was three hundred, so I don't know if you want to.
Can we go through all of this and then discuss? Have discussion on it?
Well, you have to vote on each one, that's why I'm
I, we don't have to vote on each one, she said we could vote on all of it at one time.
No, well, you have to make a motion either.
That's what I said.
Or, yeah, it's
Can I speak to clarify a point, point of information? This the motion on the floor strikes anything as related accessory dwelling units, so just to be clear, so either you like that and you're not gonna say anything, or you're gonna change it.
So, I'm gonna make it real simple. I'm gonna say that I make a motion that this ordinance, as presented, removing the blue and yellow items in this ordinance.
I'll second that.
Cause that puts you back to what
And that's my amendment to the original motion.
So Rusty, did you second it?
So that we go back to the original to the one that you received last night and go with that one. So it's less confusing.
If you look at this on the screen, you all had a, a very thorough guide through this earlier. My motion is that this ordinance move forward with, after public hearing and move to approve this, removing the yellow highlights and the blue highlights in this ordinance.
And I did say that, so it goes back to what it was last night.
Yes.
That just undoes what we just looked at in the very first example, where the green highlights were in error and the yellow restored it, so you've just undone what we just did.
I don't think that they were in error, the only thing that I would add to my motion, Rusty, is five point two point oh three oh four and five, be changed to twelve months and not twenty-four.
I will second that, cause that was the original intent, that it was
But I also think it needs to define, if you do lose your license for how long? Is it indefinite, or is it how long? I think that should be added into the ordinance as well.
Can we, without making a motion, have a discussion on that point, cause
Well, you have a motion on the table, you
I seconded it.
So there can be discussion.
But the discussion would be actually on a different topic than what the motion was. Cause David is bringing up a different point, which I agree with, that we don't have uh an agreement by anything or motion on how long if they have two or more violations in a twelve-month period, would it be a permanent loss of license?
It doesn't say anywhere that's a permanent loss of license, it's because it was when you renew, right, the way it's written now, it says um that the city clerk shall require the annual renewal if there's, within the last X amount of months, let's say twelve, there's been no more than two more violations, if you cannot renew, then you're starting over again the next year. And it depends on, you guys are not, aren't doing cap, so it depends on if you're doing
So if they lost it in November, in January, they could apply any license, so I don't see that. I don't think that flies, like, it's gotta be, there's gotta be some kind of a either a timeline or no timeline, it's forever, I don't know, but what's
So then we would amend the, uh, I'm hearing you, then we would amend the previous subsection, which says the city clerk can issue a new license upon all the following conditions, and then we can add that there's been no, um, no more than two in the last, that same language, is that what I'm hearing from you that you want to do?
Yeah, but I'm saying if, if they actually did violate and they did go there hearing, they lost their license, how long do they lose their license for? It's probably not reasonable to say for two months for one person, five, six months for this one, like, it should be a, a, you know, twenty-four month thing or forever, whatever you decide, but something, and I just want to have a discussion about that to determine what that would be.
And we had talked about a two-year, which I would
We did, we talked about a two-year, I'm, I'm good with that.
If you
Makes sense.
I could support, some period of time that, that shows we're serious in protecting the neighbors.
Yeah, but maybe we're talking about letting them, we're like, we're talking about letting them have the use, then it's just as much, you know, as, as, you know, protecting the neighborhoods the same, it, it's, it's very strict compliance, you know?
The mush maker agrees to a two-year revocation.
Thank you.
As described by the city attorney.
Then I would second the two-year revocation period.
Thank you.
Did need to get that? I'm just checking, because
In discussion, I'd also like to remind the public that section nine is included in this, which in twelve to eighteen months, the planning commission will revisit this based upon studies for economics or uh economic impact for the housing study update and the police data from calls for service and any violations, so we'll have some real data, as David said, for our community to reevaluate To reevaluate this in twelve to eighteen months.
Um, so just to clarify, what we're saying is we want a two-year revocation period if there's been two or more violations within twelve months, is that?
Yes, accurate.
Yep, after they had their hearing and they've been, then they've been proved as legitimate.
So do we have to vote on that?
Are we having a discussion on this motion now, is that what, where this is at? Yes, so my concern about the way we're going about this is. To go down the route of revising this and going to the point of, we're gonna go ahead with the Wild West proposal in this ordinance. Puts us in a position where we're making a, we're making a law. In a situation where you're trying to find facts, you want data points, and now you're, you're changing how, where, how, where this is at, so it's saying. Okay, now we're gonna choose to go in this direction, we're gonna allow the Wild West for the next eighteen months to two, two years. And, so we could do that. But maybe from what I've heard here, just to finish the thought, and then go ahead. Maybe what the best solution might be so that we don't injure any parties. Might be that we kill this. That we extend the moratorium. And in the extending of the moratorium, and let's say we do it for twelve months, so we get all those data points. We allow the reissuing of licenses. So everyone can continue, we don't damage anyone any further. And then we have the data points. And we can really make some sound legislation. So we can massage this either way, I made the motion. And as I've listened this evening, I recognize. To your point. Getting the data, spending the time over the next year to get that data is our very best approach, and so extending the moratorium for a year. Allows provisional conditional licenses and lets us establish it on a fact basis.
It's an unofficial. So I just wanna make, wanna clarification about the Wild West, I know I put that up there and made, made line of it, um. But it's not really technically the Wild West, they would actually, if we do pass this. Then the citizens do have the ability to make complaints, they, and they will be looked at, and if they are legitimate, they could lose their license. So, we extend this moratorium, you're telling the residents, I'm sorry, but. Uh, you're just gonna have to keep dealing with it until we figure it out for however long. The STR owners are wondering what's going on, what are they gonna do now? Um, we've seen all these iterations, and I, and so for me, uh, I'd like to. Figure this out, get our vote, get this done, we can admit, we can, this can be changed anytime too, and it can be changed through. Resident initiative, it can be changed through the council. Uh, this, the laws could be changed, just like we're looking at now. So there's, uh, whether we're restricting or, or allowing, either one is a change in the law, and that can happen by the next council. Next council could come in and say, we're not doing SCRs at all, you got a year, your licenses are done. So, or they could say, we're gonna let everybody operate everywhere. So there are some restrictions in there that we looked at. Taking into consideration housing and such, as we should have, we should do as a city, and not everybody up here agreed with that, with MF, uh, MFS and MFU.
Yeah.
Um, so there were some concessions made on both sides. To try to, to come to some conclusion here, and we also, the, the, uh, the penalty was stiff in the. Uh, and the, and there was the number of violations to get to that was also pretty stiff, I thought. You know, I mean, I asked for three, they said two, alright, that's stiff. So I don't, so this isn't the Wild West necessarily, there is some things here that. Do allow the citizens a path to deal with an STR that is not acting neighborly. Um, and a path for the STRs to prove it. Because they're gonna, we're gonna do a study on this, we're gonna get the police information, we're gonna get the housing study, we're gonna get the. Economic impact study to prove everything that everybody said on both sides. And if we need to change it, we can, that's what we do, so I figure, starting with. The, the least we could do, both sides have to have some concessions, I'm sure the STR owners don't like losing their license for two years. Um, but, but that's kind of the tough side of this, right? Is it, do we have to compromise that way, so it's not really technically the Wild West, but, but you can term it that, that's fine, but I just wanna say.
I'm just going by your presentation, this is, this is, the, 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 the green lines. Are basically what you've present, presented as being the Wild West. And so I'm just referencing that as the point of reference, my concern, and that's the only thing I'm trying to say here, is that if we do that. Now we allow. More or less, depends on the economy and everything else, more or less, um, STRs in any zone. For the next two years while we gather data. The reason we put a moratorium in place was because, and I didn't vote for the moratorium the first time around. Was that there was enough concern on council that this is a problem and it needs to get addressed. So the reason it's like, stop the bus, we're not gonna go anymore in this direction till we get clear on it, now you're proposing to go ahead. And we're extending the problem for, for half of the community, or a third, or quarter, or, or seventy percent.
That's what the data is about, exactly.
Mayor, may I speak?
In the first option, they were, they would still, all of them, including the other thirty-one, would still be operating, so. There might be a few more, but, I mean, you're still, you're, you're still letting everybody operate, so it's not like you're. You're not really doing a, a huge different thing here, you're just erring on the side of. You know, of these property rights and the things that they said, and let's validate it, they've already been operating since what, two thousand two, I guess, I didn't know it was that long, but.
This is, this.
I don't support it.
This proposal has licensing, it has definitions, it has regulations, it has licensing in it. It has good neighbor policies they have to adhere to, it has accountability, which were all the things. That we started this project looking forward to do. And that's a place to start, and we've, we've obligated staff to complete the things you mentioned. So that we can in twelve, not two years, twelve to eighteen months revisit. And see what the data says.
Yeah, because we.
And in the meantime, we can get on down the road. And we can have what we needed to do first step, definitions, licensing, accountability. Affidavit that they will do that, and then we can work from there. And like you said, we can change it next month if we want to, so. The motion's on the table, and mayor, I'm gonna call the question. For this amendment.
Very good. And we had a second by Rusty, so Suzanne, sure, just one moment, mayor, please.
Just a clarification, um, since we switched it up midway, are we keeping or striking the primary residence?
I, I don't think anybody has an issue with that, we're keeping it.
I know, I would strike it because it's stricken in other areas in the ordinance.
Oh, okay.
Because it's not, it doesn't serve a purpose in this ordinance.
I, yeah, I should be clarified, I don't, it's, it's up to you guys to do.
In. A, five oh, two, two, five, two, two, oh, two, okay. But that's stricken as well, see?
Yeah, so it wouldn't flag it.
It just is consistency.
Suzanne, are you ready?
Please restate what, what the final decision is that you're asking for.
I would ask that it be stricken. I would move to approve what has been presented this evening. By Mr. Zuluaga, removing the yellow highlighted items and the blue highlighted items. Amending. Five dot, two, two, dot, oh, two, oh, no, five dot, two, two, dot, oh, three, oh. See, four and five, to make that twelve. Months in lieu of twenty-four months, and to also define that, um. The revocation would be for two years if a revocation occurred.
Uh, to, the way I read, uh, just clarify, I'm understanding that there would be a two-year revocation period if two or more violations are found within twelve months. After a revocation hearing.
Yes, ma'am.
I second that one.
Thank you.
Okay, so we have the amended motion on the table with councilmember Kate May Protim. Case and councilmember Neil seconding it, and council, you may vote.
I didn't get it, Suzanne, and my trick didn't work. May I vote verbally?
If you're comfortable doing that, yes.
I vote yes, thank you.
Okay, thank you. So motion carries five to seven with councilmember Zuluaga. Five to two, excuse me.
Who out there voted from?
Somebody out there voted.
Five to two with councilmember Zuluaga and councilmember Connor's voting no.
So now we have the original motion. Nope, that took care of it.
It's done, it's over, and I have to tell you, I'm not happy with the punishment, I think that's absolutely ridiculous, two years. Did you want more?
I already spoke, I spoke up a long time ago.
Alright, I don't know where I, what I did with my agenda.
Okay, so now we still have item, we have.
These are amendments, these are amendments to my motion. This is a submit, that's a sub motion to my motion, which you've just done. So we're still not at the end of this process.
Okay. I would call that question, mayor. Okay.
I'm not clear on what question we're calling.
I know, I amended it.
Just voted on, you amended Robert's motion, you voted on that, what else is there to vote on?
My motion.
It was amended.
No, only the yellow and the, and the, and the blue. So we get to actually look at it again to see if there was any other thing, cuz we haven't talked about the multifamily.
She says, Kelly Kay says, move to approve Robert Zuluaga's. Motion removing, so she acknowledges it, your motion, just remove the highlighted areas. Add this, you voted on it, I can't understand what we could change.
It's a sub motion to my motion, my motion hasn't been.
I amended your motion and had a second, and we had a vote.
She, and Robert, she said, move to approve Robert Zuluaga's motion. Is what she said in her motion.
Then let's throw it on Roberts and put an end to it.
So you amended councilmember Zulaga's motion, so now that's what's here for you guys all to, um, talk about and to vote on.
However, there is a point that I would like to make, by removing the blue. The M, the multifamily was just all of the conditions that we. We've removed the blue also, now we removed the yellow and the blue, so we need to put that back in. You are wanted, which was limitations on the multifamily.
I'll vote it already, I'm not putting nothing back in.
So.
That's true.
Yeah, well, I would like to make a sub motion.
Nina, can you please clarify where we are, this is.
I, I'd like to, for clarity, cuz just, it's better to be clear than not, so, um, there was a motion on the table and then it was amended. So then that's what now is, we're back to in front of you, the ordinance, um, as we discussed. So either make further amendments on it or vote for it.
Because the blues.
The, it councilmember, councilman May Protim case said, move to approve Robert Zuluaga's motion.
As amended.
She, she said that verbatim.
Okay, I apologize to those to amend, to amend the motion.
Yeah, she said, move to approve Robert's, uh, Zuluaga's motion, removing the yellow and blue highlighted, so. You're proving his motion, just taking the yellow and blue out.
But the amendment wasn't voted on, so that's.
No, I know, but the other things. Oh, we weren't doing sub motions tonight.
We never voted in my motion, you amended it.
Right, so then that's what's in. Right, so that's what's.
So, but your motion, this is.
No.
Here we go again.
The motion. As presented, then she got a second on the amendment. So that the ordinance only reflects the green. So now the ordinance only reflects the green.
I think that's clear.
Itself as amended now.
Yes, that was a cleaner.
So I have a question before we do that, so. The, a whole economic impact study, lease code enforcement, the MFS, MFU is all deleted, you know?
No. Your, the green at the end is in the ordinance.
Oh, okay, I got you.
That is there, okay, protection. For the, what current MF.
Would it be helpful if I take a couple of moments and remove what you've just motioned, and then we review that before we vote on it? Because we're making sure. Done something stupid here? I, I can go through and remove the yellow, and I can remove the blue. Then we can go through it, and you actually see we've got something that is accurate. Cuz if you're gonna be voting, that was a sub amendment, if, if, Nina, if I understand you correctly, that was a sub amendment, that was a sub motion, and we still have. Now we have the actual motion, which is gonna be.
Because it was amended, so it's.
What we've amended it to is actually what is.
That's probably better in the, in the interest of full disclosure and understanding that there seems to be confusion, so I think that's, that's, that's what, that's what's the best. Least worst option.
Right, so now what happens then, to clarify everything, is how Kelly amended it, and we voted on the. The motion to amend, you can now go back and read it, how it was amended. Cuz this, you don't, we don't have to do this, but it clarifies the process, you can go back now, Kelly, and read the amendments. That were agreed upon. And that's what creates the current ordinance that's in front of us, and then you make a motion to vote on the current one.
That's fair. Okay, that's, I get that.
I make a motion that we approve ordinance fourteen thirty-one with the following amendments. We, in paragraph five point two, two, dot, oh, one, oh, definitions, the third paragraph that begins, primary residence means be stricken. In paragraph five point two, two, dot, oh, two, oh. I move that we, I, the word clerk after the word city in item A.
That was already done.
That's already done, never mind, I'm reading the green. Uh, in, uh, three, five point two, two, dot, oh, two, oh, number K. After the colon, strike the words accessory dwelling units, ADUs, which are.
Sorry, can we just pause, um, just because of the way it was presented, so I wanna make sure that we go back to, um, councilmember Zulaga's. Options and make sure that anything in that yellow and blue, that we just said, you know, we're already, yeah.
We already voted on that.
Sarah, do you have the ability to, to remove those? Can you do that as we go through it?
Accessory dwelling units, ADUs, which are not the license. Yes.
You, you just taken the.
Just take the yellow out.
The highlight off of it.
The green, the green stricken says.
Just delete it.
Okay.
No, cuz it was there.
Keep going. There you go.
No, cuz it's. Let's just look at yellow and blue, that's what you, that's what your motion was.
And Rusty, you had said, well, you have to change it later.
Correct, this one goes to the twelve.
But, but it's right now, and we're not getting that far yet.
Okay, that's right. So all of this.
So all of this.
Wait a minute. No, you gotta remove that. That has to come out. All of that yellow stuff needs to come out at the bottom.
No, because if you do that, you're gonna lose four.
The yellow, so that.
Correct. So you just take on highlights. Right now, you're just taking off yellow, yellow and blue highlights.
Yep, and the asterisk comes out.
No, that wasn't.
It does in this ordinance. It's not there. We go to section six, six after the table. Comes out.
The bottom one, but not the top one.
That is, that is exactly as this looks if you take the highlights off.
No, because this is the one that's on the motion. This is, yeah, it's this one.
If we started that way, but we didn't. This is what, yeah.
This is what we got.
But let's make sure because this is. Highlights off, yeah. And then delete the yellow asterisk highlight.
There's, yeah. There you go.
Because I think David and I wanted to look back.
So that one. But aren't we gonna just remove yellow and blue highlights and go through the document? Isn't that what the goal is?
It is, right.
That language is not in here.
The motion wasn't to remove the words, it was to remove the highlights. It was to remove the highlights. What's the motion say? So the motion said remove the highlights. Now you're removing verbiage. You can't do that yet.
We're back to what.
It doesn't matter her intent, her words were different. So going back to the table, you can't just remove the words. You have to just remove the yellow and blue highlights because that was a motion. Wasn't about words.
No, remove the highlights.
No, we're not going to play semantics with you, Robert. I'm done with that. There was a motion to remove your wording with the yellow and the blue. You keep doing this.
Would you please read the motion?
She wanted to remove your highlighted options. We know her intent.
I'm sorry. After the vote?
She can clarify her intent because you know as well as I do, her intent was not to remove the highlights on paper. You know that.
I know what.
She didn't ask for the highlight to be removed. That's not.
Yeah, but what is the motion? So Suz, would you please go back on the record and read to us what you put for us to vote on?
Original motion and remove the yellow and blue highlights. That's, I, that's just.
Yellow and blue highlighted text.
Well, my intent was the yellow and blue highlighted items because they are not incongruent with what we had agreed upon. So.
Well, I'm, I am concerned though. Yellow and blue highlighted for the studies and. So wouldn't it take that away? Oh, because you see is green and we see it as something different.
Yeah.
Okay.
Frank is correct.
That's why we're trying to go through this and. We are right now. This is going to make it clear. That's why we're taking the time to go through it.
Exactly.
So my intention, as we just did in the table, was for the blue and yellow items to be removed.
You said highlights and that's.
I don't care what I said. My intent. As Hillary said, semantics, Robert.
Fine, we'll do a motion on the floor. Clarify. That's fine.
I'll make a motion to clarify the comments made by Mayor Pro Tim as we go through this document and correct it to what was intended. So everyone here can see it, the public and the council.
I second.
And that's what will be amended for you to vote on.
I second your motion.
So, so David, your motion is to go through this document line by line to make really sure everything that we're putting in this, including all of those, the, the greens are consistent with what we want.
Only to clarify what the mayor pro tem said.
My intent.
That was her motion, so I can only, I can, I can't do the green stuff. I can only do what she said. For, and we, I'm making a motion for her to clarify that because there's some confusion and, and there's some, you know what I meant? Well, we're just gonna fix it right now. We'll know exactly what she means because she's gonna say it specifically and we're all gonna use the same document. Because I have a different one than I think than what she has. So we're gonna use the one that everybody can see with the combined stuff that you, you put out, right? And then let's move forward.
Good.
Thank you. So clarify your motion one more time and Rusty seconded it.
My, my.
The motion.
My motion is to allow the mayor pro tem to clarify her comments on what should be what she requested to be removed from this ordinance as, and go down this ordinance that has everything and everybody's comments, so that we can get a clarification on each of the things. So that we understand specifically to satisfy your point, what she wants. And we're gonna go through it anyway, so not really wasting time, so.
And I second that motion.
Thank you. My intent was that the blue and yellow items.
We have to vote.
I thought you wanted me to clarify.
Well, we're gonna go through the whole, we're gonna go through.
We're gonna go through the document. Thank you.
Councilmember Connors, are you voting?
Can, it says I'm confused. Vote yes.
Thank you. Motion carries.
Okay.
Thank you.
Right there, up there on the screen.
Oh, yeah. So that paragraph should be stricken. Yes, removed.
Stricken, yeah, because we have to line through it because we have to keep it.
Or, yeah.
Or if you can line through it. Like in red or something so that Nina knows.
Well, you didn't do that with the table. You didn't stricken.
I would.
Line through with a table. I'm okay for clarity, for whatever it matters. I'm okay.
I think it was, Robert. I think so. We just removed the highlight.
Just remove the.
Yeah, so the, but the table was stricken, but this wasn't. This was just there highlighted. So this would have, we have to strike through this to show it was there, but this was part of the mayor pro tem's intent was to remove that or have it stricken. That makes sense?
Yes.
Thank you. Now it's pink or purple or something. I don't know.
Gonna remove the highlight though.
Yeah. I like that. That means you mean it.
Can't we just delete it?
I'm fine. I'm, I am fine if we just. I'm, I'm fine to delete.
The highlights because Nina has to, you either just need to delete it.
I'm already following on a separate document, but.
Right.
Like Councilmember Zulaga said, and I agree that this is what we've been doing consistently, the purple just.
Right, don't remove the highlights.
Just delete.
Just delete this.
Deleted his other.
The other paragraph was gone. Yeah, so if that's your intention, then.
Exactly.
It's just gonna confuse the heck out of it to have it in there.
So then where it starts to be highlighted in the yellow and the blue, that was, that was in the.
It was in the document and lined through. It was not yellow.
And the liner.
So remove.
Those two sections, just remove the highlights and then we're good.
No, delete it.
Delete.
Make it clear first. Make it clear.
They don't delete. Well, that one does, but the next paragraph. That deletes.
Just remove the highlights on that one, Sarah. So first start with the yellow. Very good.
Now it looks like this.
And remove the blue. That's what was there. Yeah. If you just remove the blue highlights, yeah, the blue and keep that, yeah.
And keep.
Yep.
And keep that last one.
That's already on my line, so it's good.
So then this document that you just all looked through, that's what's on the table now for you to vote on or make amendments for. That's just.
Or examine.
Can we start just once quickly, look at it from the beginning?
At it.
Really quick, just to make sure we did it right.
Scroll down a little bit.
So you can go to the top as well, though, Sarah, and remove the, the instruction where it's got the yellow and the blue. Yeah, okay.
Because I'm gonna create a clean version eventually of.
Okay.
So we're gonna. Let's check it, right?
Okay, yes. 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 Those, that should be twelve and not twenty-four in the green. Yes.
And unstrike the twelve and the twelve. Eight within the last.
It's a good thing she's here. Yes.
We don't have the violation guideline.
And then the violation guidelines, Nina, you have to add for the two years.
I, I have it in theory that I'm gonna, that, what, two year, this is gonna be a two year revocation of his tumor violations.
After hearing.
So I'll, I, I will in substance add that. I might, I might get to make it more clear, but I have that here.
And I have that in the motion defined.
No, no, I'll give a clean version of the document.
The rest of it should be good. And the sections.
So we should strike, strike and then PCPC. Add PC.
That's it.
Oh, wait, wait, wait. Hold on, hold on. So in the MFU and MFS, we did allow for in that. But we do it in text.
Section eight or seven.
It's on the top of page nine.
Okay.
Is where we address the MFU, Catherine. So it's in there.
Yes, it's right there. Okay.
Yep. Thank you, Sarah, for your time.
So this, that's the ordinance that's in front of you right now. It's either make an amendment or to vote on.
Did someone second?
I'll second it.
Thank you, David. I do.
Clarifying, Nina, where are we now? We're at my motion that's been amended.
And adding that two-year revocation.
Adding the two-year.
And, yeah, we went through it line by line and that's.
Through line by line.
And we've cleaned up that'll be the ordinance and then additional language for the revocation.
And now we're ready to finalize this to vote on my motion, which now is this.
This would be the last. Unless, unless Councilmember Case's motion is amended, this would be the final vote because you're voting on this amended version.
If this isn't a, a, you know, non-logical argument here, where we're gonna go circular on this. If you've already voted on that, it's decided. Unless you have something new to add for an amendment, then you should not be suggesting a motion to amend.
Right.
That makes sense?
Yes.
So right now we call for the vote.
I'll call the questions.
The motion by Councilmember May Protim Case and.
I'll second.
Second by David Bott. Council, you may vote.
Can you, I'm sorry, can you please tell us what we're actually voting on about what her motion was?
I have the motion that we're voting on Councilmember Zuluaga's motion as amended, adding the two-year revocation language. That City Attorney Wilson, Williams, Williams, sorry, let me jump.
So this closes that loop from the amended motion. Right.
And it's exactly what we just.
And now we're back to, we're now, we're now voting on.
Final motion.
Roberts' initial motion with those amendments.
Those changes. And if you would remove the, yeah.
Okay, so you may vote, counsel. Thank you. Counsel motion has passed five to seven with. I'm sorry, I don't know why I haven't meant the law. I'm sorry. With Councilmember Zuluaga and Councilmember Connors voting no.
I apologize for voting no on my own motion.
Change your vote.
And counsel, if I may, pardon this, ordinance included a economic impact study.
Correct.
And so, in talking with some of you, it sounded like we would want to amend the twenty twenty-three budget ordinance fourteen thirty-four to allocate, we got the estimate of thirty-five to forty thousand dollars thereabouts. So I, I don't know if we'd wanna, I think just a consensus to bring that amendment to that ordinance for the public hearing on December first. Is that?
To the budget, yes.
To the budget, yes. And also to, to clarify, hopefully we'll, we'll have more information for you by that time. The housing needs assessment grant application, we have not received word back on that yet. We may get everything we asked for. We may get some of what we asked for. We get to make it none of it. So that may also be something that we need to appropriate.
Right.
Well, we'll just change the budget being that.
And I would just say too, that if that becomes a problem, we do have a twenty sixteen and we have, our population hasn't changed really significantly since then, probably.
I'm, I'm not hearing what you just said.
I said that we do have another, we had, we do have a housing study right now that already says.
That is in the.
That is, that, well, we have that. He's saying that there might, if there's any issue with like, we may have to vote again. Because it might cost more than we expected because he didn't get the grants that he wanted. And I'm saying, even so, we still have a housing study. I don't think there's much change in the population. So we could look at that as well and see if it's appropriate. It, yeah, so, yeah. It might not be, but, but regardless, we want to do this, put this in the twenty twenty-three budget so that we make this happen as we just voted.
And we'll, we'll have more information for you on the housing grant, but just I wanted to be clear and set that expectation for next time.
And then also. We need to just give them a consensus.
Yes.
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 Yeah, Aaron will amend the, the amendment for, for public hearing.
Yeah, and I just wanted to also make comment based on our conversation for the SDR Economic Impact Study that we could potentially get grant dollars for that as well.
Okay, yeah, we'll, we'll certainly look for that. Okay.
Oh, we still have the moratorium. So technically it's item nine B that we're moving on to. And that is. It was eight C, but we moved.
But it's now nine B.
B, yes. So and that's the approval of ordinance number fourteen thirty-two for discussion. And our attorney who needs a moment was going to present that, so. I would move on, but we don't have anything to move on to.
Before she kind of weighs in on that, and that is just question wise. So if this ordinance is now the ordinance, do we have enough time between now and the end of the year to put into place the necessary licensing applications, all the other pieces that are required for this to move forward? Do we, do we allow ourselves enough time to have those pieces which aren't in this ordinance? Including the good neighbor policy and all the rest. What's that look like?
That's a good question.
And this ends when the fifteenth.
Yeah, December fifteenth.
How much time do you need?
Yeah.
We could, we will give it our best shot to get those pieces done. I don't know if there will be additional decisions we need from council. We will.
We'll have to set speeds by resolution.
Yeah.
First of the year.
I think we can do it by the end of the year. If the staff yells at me and says that's impossible, we'll let you know. If, okay, the staff, um, yells at me and says that's impossible, we'll let you know soon it's possible.
Okay.
I need to go back and look at all, all the stuff in here and see what all is in there, but I, I think, I think it may be possible by the end of the year.
So do we extend the moratorium until January first?
So.
If we, if we extended.
One second. So, Michael, do, do you think you can come back with the information by December first? Or, um, or do we need to extend the moratorium before?
If, I would really prefer that we would, um, extend the moratorium through the end of December to have that flexibility. Just because it, it's gonna take a bit, especially with holidays, um, interfering with getting that done.
Okay.
So I would take every minute you can give us of.
Some thoughts I had. If we have to set the fees and all of that by, by resolution, we have one, typically we have one meeting left in December before the end of the year. Therefore, maybe it makes sense for us to extend it into January. I know, you know, we've, the ordinance says, I think, two months after the end of the, uh, when the ordinance becomes effective. So if we were to do that just to facilitate, and it, I don't, does it require a moratorium? Can we not just take the applications and hold them until, I mean, till we make those decisions? Do we need the moratorium? That's just a, a thought. To put out there, because it's gonna take you some time.
Well.
To get a resolution, to set fees, to research it, to do all the things that.
And to that point, I think that because this is only taking it to public comment, like, th- this is initial posting for the, for the, um, for the extension of the moratorium, we're gonna run out of time if we don't do it. So we can, we can perfect it. By, in two weeks' time, we can perfect this, yeah. So from that standpoint, I think it's it, it gives us time to really analyze it before, and then it, before, it'll come to public comment. We, we could say, no, we're not gonna do the moratorium. But if we don't do it now, we have that, we don't have that option.
Right. Makes sense.
Yeah, makes sense to me, yeah. So, so make a motion, so, so what.
Do we need a public?
We need to. Do it before we make a motion to do it. How long do we need to do it?
This is just.
I make. Okay, yeah. I make a motion that we just, we move the moratorium for public comment. Um, to December. December first.
Suzanne.
I just, you have one person that signed up to speak regarding this.
Okay.
Okay.
Very good. So before we vote, I need to take public comment.
So as a motion, and who would be the second?
I'll, I'll second it.
Can I just clarify the motion? Um, I just wanna make sure you're, what you're doing is you're approving the ordinance on first reading and setting the public hearing for December first, right?
That's exactly our motion.
I just wanna make sure it was, it was clear. Perfect. Thank you.
And I second it.
Yep.
Are you ready for?
Yeah.
Mary Stokowski.
And, and I'll make it really short. I'm not gonna say everything that I, I would have said regarding it, but, um, the license renewals are being held hostage right now. Um, those short-term rentals have bookings well into next year. And, um, I suppose what might happen if the moratorium isn't lifted would be a greater problem with remittance of the lodging taxes. I don't think City Hall wants.
The moratorium extends past January first that you get renewed anyway.
Well, but our, our licenses right now are not getting renewed. So if.
They get renewed January first of the year, right? It's not January first.
Well, the, the ones that have been submitted for renewal, because the emails just came out this week for renewing the licenses are not being processed. So just wanna make sure everybody is aware of that, that it might need to be amended somehow, so that the ones that currently have licenses have their renewal by January.
So if this, if, if council approves on first reading as of December first, this will pass, which says that you, it could be, the, the current ones could be renewed, section four.
So then they'll just open the, the renewals.
Can we put, yeah, can we pull up on the ordinance or see everyone's on the same page and go to section four? It's one, page one forty-nine and one seventy-six.
But it would be a violation of titles three or, uh, chap- chapter three and five if they're only renewed according to this moratorium until June thirtieth, because it says business licenses are for the whole calendar year. So just.
This, Mary, it's just so that staff has the ability to put the pl- pieces in place. That's the only reason.
Right now, from what I understand, that there is a business license for short-term rentals is to accommodate the remittance of the lodging taxes per the Woodland Park Sales and Use Tax um, requirement under three point three eight. That's the only reason there's a license to begin with right now, because there's no short-term rental license or permit specifically. So that's just what's being held hostage right now for the renewals. So, that's it. Thank you.
Thanks.
Thanks for bringing that up.
Okay, counsel, you may vote.
Did you not want to have?
I kinda wanna sit to show everyone was on the same page.
Yeah, yeah.
The section four that relates to.
Mary's question.
I could read it, but I don't know if people are visual or. Yeah, on the same way.
Yeah. Yeah.
Do you want me to email?
Feel like a little mouse over here.
No, she needs to put on.
She just wanted to show it to the audience.
Sarah, I'm just gonna email it to you.
I'll email you just the section, is that? Yeah, the last page of this. You're good, thanks. And even though Suzanne said you may vote, I don't think, and I don't think that any of us got, if you sent it to us, none of us got it. I think is what other councilman, there it is.
There you go.
Oh, yeah, also, it's eleven o'clock, so I need a motion to extend.
I'll move to extend the meeting for fifteen minutes.
I'll second.
Let's make it thirty, David, just to be safe.
But be careful, don't vote on what's on your screen. So let's do a verbal vote.
Yeah, Case and that was Otte that seconded it, to extend the motion for, um, thirty minutes.
Thirty minutes. And just so we have plenty of time. The meeting for thirty minutes.
To eleven thirty.
Yeah.
Okay, LeVar.
Yes.
Case.
Yes.
Connors.
Yes.
Nikai.
Yes.
Neil.
Yes.
Otte.
Yes.
Thank you, motion carries. See, you're not in the right. Okay, gotcha.
It's not on TV if he sits over there.
I'm worried my hair is gonna fall off the edge of the stairs.
So Nina, for the, uh, for this provision, since those licenses would be provisional until June thirtieth, what's the?
The idea with this was only because that was when you guys were, were asking for a moratorium for six months, but I, as of December first, or I should say probably December eighth, because the effective date of this ordinance when it passes, hopefully, this allows, um, these business licenses to be renewed, and that's almost a month before January first. Um, and it just, it just, and that's the business licenses.
And then the moratorium would be so that they can get the fee schedules and all this stuff and, and get it codified and done. Okay.
But certainly, we, don't we wanna have clarification of those applications before that happens? Isn't that part of what this whole process is about, that we, that we clean that up? So I'm just saying, really, this whole thing is to give staff the necessary time to put the pieces.
This is just a business license.
Yeah. That can get perfected. I totally agree. We can vote on this now.
But I think the concern was the provisional language. So.
That was my concern.
You, I mean, if, 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 if I heard you, I would change the due date to the end of the year, because you guys are, it's, it's obvious the way you're going in terms of what you already approved in, in your ordinance. If, this was here because you were, you know, you're considering a different way, so, um.
But can't that all get fixed between now and the first?
Of course.
So let's just do it. And then staff gets an opportunity to weigh in and timing and all.
And the business licenses will go through for their full year.
Yeah, exactly.
It's fine. Because when we're done and everything's in place, we revoke the moratorium and it doesn't matter what it says.
Exactly, exactly. Are we ready to vote?
I am.
Mayor, are we ready to vote? Yeah. Okay, you can vote, counsel. Thank you, counsel. Motion has passed unanimously for the extension of the moratorium.
You go to first reading, you go to public.
Yes.
Yeah.
New business.
All right, new business. None. Under reports. I just have a couple of dates. November nineteenth, eleven AM to one PM is the T-Cross Adoption Event. And that'll be at the Woodland Park Public Library. And then we have November twenty-sixth from nine AM to four PM Mountain Artist Holiday Show and Sale at the Ute Pass Cultural Center. December first, we have December Lunch and Learn with, at the Ute Pass Cultural Center from eleven thirty AM to one PM. That's all I have for announcements. Councilmember Case.
Thanks, Mayor. Um, just a little more information from the PPACG board meeting last week on the ninth. Um, they are, they, we, the board approved an eight percent staff wage increase for the staff at PPACG, just to share that information for the council's edification. Um, I already mentioned the tip amendment for MMOF money, and then I thought I'd let you know that from the C dot update. Richard Zamora, he's over, PPACG is retiring November thirtieth.
Oh, is he?
Yeah. He's moving on to the private sector. That's, and then the Parks and Recreation monthly report. We have, uh, coverage, meaning recovery rate of fifty-six point two-three percent. So they're staying consistent in their great work there, and WAC passes sold, twenty-one was five hundred and forty-two as of, to, as of the end of October, six eighty-nine um, for twenty-two so far. So anyway, great things going on with Parks and Rec, Cultural Center and Aquatic Center. That's all I have. Thank you, Mayor.
Councilmember Connors.
Thank you, Mayor, and I appreciate everybody out there hanging out this late. Um, happy Thanksgiving next week. Everybody, please drive safe if you're going out of town. If you're not going out of town, please drive safe, because we have a new police chief. And he's not so new anymore. He's been snowed on about three times now, so. Uh, Veterans Breakfast Saturday at the Historic Ute Inn on the third of December at eight o'clock in the morning. Thank you.
Councilmember Nikai.
I have nothing.
Councilmember Neil.
I have nothing, thank you.
Councilmember Otte.
And I have nothing.
Councilmember Zuluwaga.
Uh, Grace has gone home. She got a great presentation from Keep Willing, Willing Park Beautiful. And so we'll just defer it till the, the fir- the first of December.
Yeah, they're gonna do.
It's so exciting. I mean, what, what, some of the folks, and, and it's an unders- talking about, if you wanna volunteer, it's an understaffed board. There's like three or, well, they don't have enough, a quorum to actually do business, but the creative ideas coming out of there are so exciting. So, uh, we'll get that presentation here for the next council meeting. That's it.
Uh, city attorney. City manager.
Uh, green used to be my favorite color until tonight, so thanks for that. I also have motion sickness. Thank you very much. Um, just one, one real thing, uh, we do have the holiday toy and coat drive coming up. The Teller and Park County First Responders will be working together again this year to stuff a truck, an ambulance, a bear cat, and a police car at our Wal- Walmart here. Um, and that's would, uh, we would really appreciate your participation. Uh, we'll be out at Walmart on November twenty-fifth and twenty-sixth from eight AM to noon, so please get toys and coats and bring them and fill up all those really big vehicles. That's all I got.
Noon time?
Eight to noon.
At Walmart.
At Walmart.
Then twenty-six. Thank you.
November.
November.
Okay.
Christmas. Otherwise.
All right. Counsel, thank you for this very slow and painful meeting, but you all did a good job. So I appreciate it, and I appreciate your time and effort with this issue, so. And to the public, thank you for hanging in there with us as well, so. All right, this meeting is adjourned.